Stand for the invocation led by Mr. Commissioner Bain and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Appicella.
Heavenly Father, we are gathered here tonight in service to our community. Thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us for springtime and its life-giving warmth that brings forth a renewal of life in resplendent beauty. We are thankful that we live in the United States, a land of plenty where we are truly free to voice our opinions. We pray that you will instill a sense of open-mindedness and compassion in us tonight. We are thankful for our health, prosperity, and freedom, for we know that there are many people in this world who suffer from disease, poverty, and oppression. We pray that you will give us guidance and understanding and open our minds and hearts to serve the greater good. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain, Commissioner Appicella. Mr. English, Commissioner English, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Appicella.
Here.
Mr. McPherson.
Here.
Mr. Bain.
Here.
Ms. Vanuch.
Here.
Myself, Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Commissioner English. Any declarations of disqualification on any items on the agenda this evening for any commissioners? Okay, seeing none, this evening now we'll move on to public presentations, but before we move on to the public-public presentations, the commission would like to honor a special guest this evening, Supervisor Cohen. Would you come down to the front, please? So, this evening, we have Mr. Supervisor Cohen with us, and most people probably don't know that, and I was trying to think of what I would say to you this evening, and I've actually known you half my life, believe it or not. So, I was a student at Brookpoint High School, and I can tell you, I've never met an individual who wants to serve this county more than Mr. Cohen. He's had a lifetime of service, not only as a teacher, four years on the Planning Commission, but now as a supervisor. When I work at the polls and I talk to students occasionally, I've never, ever heard students talk so highly of a teacher that engages them and brings them into the community. Tom was, when I was appointed onto the Planning Commission, Tom, it was in his blood to sort of bring me under his wing, teach me what good planning standards would be, to make sure that he sort of rubbed off his good planning skills and made sure that I at least understood what all the acronyms were, like CUP, TGA, RPA, all of that stuff, which was quite an uphill battle. So, I know you're going to do great things as a supervisor, and the commission would like to thank you for your four years of service. It's definitely in your blood to take care of the Stafford residents and our children. And so, this evening, we would like to dedicate a proclamation for your hard work and making Stafford such a great place to live. And so, we have your proclamation here. There's your proclamation, and I'm going to set this down because we all chipped in and got you something very special. So, on the commission, we took a vote on what we should get, Tom, and I was on the get Tom a serious gift side, and I was the one with the money that had collected it, so I won. But they really wanted to get you a candy dish, so we settled for a candy bag. So, Tom always is in charge of bringing us our candy to eat at the meetings, and so we are definitely going to miss that. So, we've appointed Commissioner Bain to bring the candy now. So, the gift the commission caught you is a gavel, and it's inscribed with your time of service on the commission, your name, and a quote from George Washington that states it, hold on, I've got to read it because I don't want to mess it up. "It is impossible to rightly govern without God and the Bible." So, we knew that would mean a lot to you.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. Here you go.
Well, thank you. It was an honor to serve on the Planning Commission. Many of the people that I got to serve with are still up here. I learned a lot from them. The new members I know from many different ways, and they are amazing individuals. You're amazing. I've known that for, and you're only 25, so.
Yeah. Only 12 years now.
That's right, only 12 years now. So, it's just been a great pleasure serving. The staff is phenomenal. I cannot speak highly enough of Mr. Harvey and all his staff, speaking of which, and it's just great, been a great honor to work with people of such high quality who really care about this county and put a lot of work towards it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move on to the public presentations portion of the meeting. So, at this point in time, if any member of the public would like to come down to the podium, please state your name, address, and the district that you reside. You'll have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining, and when the red light comes on, that your time is up. You can come down and talk on any item that is not a public hearing item. So, if you have anything other than the two public hearing items this evening, or three public hearing items this evening, you can come down. Does anybody wish to come down to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public presentations portion of the meeting, or the public hearing portion of the meeting, and move on to the item number one on the agenda, the reclassification, Stafford Airport Industrial Park. And for this presentation, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brian Gooch.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Brian Gooch with Planning and Zoning. I'll be presenting Agenda Item Number One, which is Stafford Airport Industrial Park. This is a request for reclassification from the A1 agricultural to M1 light industrial zoning district to allow commercial and industrial development on Assessor's Parcels 3813 and 3833, consisting of 65.99 acres. The applicant is Daniel Payne with Ramoth Road Investors. The agent is Lee Cherwick with Hildrup Properties, and this is in the Hartwood District. Again, this property is owned A1 agricultural. It's located on the south side of Ramoth Church Road and west side of Centerport Parkway. Surrounding uses include the M1 zone Stafford Regional Airport to the south, M1 and M2-zoned commercial laundry facility and equipment supply to the east, and A2-zone single-family residential to the north. The comprehensive plan designates the property within the central Stafford business area. The more detailed land use concept for this area shown here recommends business and industry uses for this property. The property is mostly wooded with varying topography. The area near the intersection of Ramoth Church Road and Centerport Parkway is relatively level, and steeper slopes and stream valleys are located in the central and southern portions of the property. The property includes a small, non-contiguous piece of land located at the intersection of Ramoth Church Road and Centerport Parkway on the east side here. This was area that was split from the larger parcel when Centerport Parkway was realigned, and no improvements currently exist on the property apart from access road on the eastern parcel. You can see the cleared trees for that, and I believe this was used for equipment storage and staging during the realignment of Centerport Parkway. There are no known critical resource protection areas on the property. However, some wetland areas exist along the streams located in the central part of property. There's a small family cemetery with 13 grave sites located on parcel 3833, and that's shown as the Red Star. The cemetery was surveyed in 2007 and recorded as the Embry Family Cemetery Number Three. Graves are marked with dates ranging between 1819 and 1899. Here's a view from the west, or to the west, from Centerport Parkway showing the existing The generalized development plan submitted with the application depicts seven buildings totaling 462,525 square feet located on the northern portion of the property. Uses are not specified apart from warehousing on the two larger buildings shown here. One full-service access is shown on Ramoth Church Road, and one full-service access is shown on Centerport Parkway. A primary access road within 90 feet of right-of-way is shown in the general location of the existing access road.
Mr. Gooch, can I stop you for a second? In reference to the access that's on Ramoth Church, is that on a, is that on the straight end, or is that on the, like, on the blind side, like, on the curve on Ramoth Church Road? From Centerport Parkway, I guess you're going to be going west, I mean, I guess you're going to be going east on Coathouse, I mean, on Ramoth, correct?
Leaving the property, yes.
Yes, is that, what does that look like as far as photography right through there? Is it?
It is located near a curve. There could be site distance easements, or I guess it wouldn't be easements, it would be on their property, but there could be some clearing needed to be done there for site distance purposes.
Okay, that's my question. Okay, thank you.
A 50-foot transitional buffer along the western property line exists, or not exists, is shown on GDP, and that's here. That's required by the Design and Construction Standards Manual. And access easement to the cemetery is also shown along with a fence and a 35-foot undisturbed buffer, and these are required by code. And following up on your question, Mr. English, the applicant has not proffered conformance with the GDP or proffered the types of uses to be located on the property, so the ultimate site configuration is subject to change.
Okay, thank you.
The comprehensive plan identifies Ramoth Church Road and Centerport Parkway as in need of four-lane divided upgrades. Transportation Impact Analysis, or TIA, was submitted with the application. The analysis was based on 500,000 square feet of industrial development with an anticipated traffic generation of 3,633 vehicles per day. It's estimated that 981 of those trips would be on Ramoth Church Road and American Legion Road to the east of the development. The TIA states the current traffic volume on Ramoth Church is approximately 2,000 vehicles per day. The TIA recommends a provision of turn lanes into the development on Ramoth Church and Centerport Parkway. And the TIA also shows degradation of eastbound American Legion Road at the US Route 1 signal from a Level Service C to a Level Service D, and that's specifically during the PMP hour. Staff has reached out to VDOT for their recommendation on improving that level of service. VDOT felt that the addition of, excuse me, a right turn lane would be of the most benefit at this intersection. There are no improvements for this intersection in VDOT's six-year improvement plan. County transportation staff has provided a rough estimate of 911,000 for the construction of a turn lane. Also, based on information provided in the TIA, under 2025 build-out conditions, the development would account for approximately 45% of eastbound traffic on American Legion Road at this intersection during the PMP hour.
Brian, I'm sorry, can you go back?
Yes, sir.
The 3633 total vehicles per day, you said that's based on industrial uses, right?
Correct.
But there are other uses under M1 that could occur on this property?
That's correct.
And some of those uses could be far more intense than an industrial use?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't actually know what's going to go on this property. We just know that the cap is 500,000 square feet, and that could be one building or many buildings and uses?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
That's correct. As far as airport impacts, the comprehensive plan establishes airport impact zones with the development. It provides development recommendations for each zone. This site falls under Zones 1, 3, and 2, or 1, 2, and 3. The majority of the site is in Area 3, or the H1 horizontal inside flight zone. Development is most likely to occur in Zone 3, which lists M1 uses as compatible or in need of additional review. Key review component for that is the anticipated population density. Staff does not anticipate that the population density recommendations in the comp plan would be exceeded with the proposed industrial development. And we've also reached out to the airport authority, and they have not expressed any concerns with the proposal. Analysis was also provided by the applicant, which demonstrates that the height of structures on the property will not interfere with the navigable airspace per Federal Aviation Regulation Part 77.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gooch, can I take you back? So, I see a boundary line that's in close proximity to the runway. What's the distance?
I'm not certain. I'd have to check on the distance.
I thought the airport-land use compatibility plan indicated that there should be some, what's the right terminology here, some gap between a use and the airport. I don't really see that in the proffers, so I'm a little concerned. I thought that was supposed to be 3,000 feet, but I could be wrong.
I'd have to go back and look at that, at that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Proposed proffers include that the site development will be limited to 500,000 square feet. Right-of-way will be dedicated along Ramoth Church to accommodate future widening. Property will be designed such that features and landscaping do not attract birds. A three-foot berm and solid row of evergreen shrubs will be provided along Ramoth Church Road, and turn lanes will be provided into the property entrances if warranted at site plan. And also, any office or hotel constructed on the property three or more stories in height will include fire sprinklers and a standpipe system, and this was in response to concerns expressed by fire and rescue.
I do have one question regarding the right-of-way dedicated along Ramoth Church Road for the future widening. Is that only along the portion of Ramoth Church Road that abuts the property? Because if so, that would only make an impact if it was widened all the way to the intersection of Route 1. Is that correct?
Yes, so, that would include just right-of-way along the frontage of this property. That's correct.
Okay, so, after it left the, the road left that property, we'd go back to a single lane, so that would probably do more harm than good, having it go to two lanes and then back to one lane again and having a merge?
Yeah, well, I guess it could be accommodated in two ways. Either development of future properties on the road would be required when they're developed to dedicate the necessary right-of-way for future widening, or if VDOT came in and decided they wanted to go ahead with the widening, but they didn't have all the necessary right-of-way, then they go work through the process of getting that right-of-way or purchasing that area from the property owners involved.
All the way to Route 1?
All the way, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Staff notes the positives are the M1 zoning is consistent with the land use recommendations on the comp plan. This is consistent with the established development patterns. Proffers may help limit transportation impacts, and proffers will help reduce visual and noise impacts on residents along Ramoth Church Road. However, staff notes the negative is that transportation impacts have not been addressed in accordance with comp plan policy for that PMP hour approach at the American Legion and Route 1 intersection. Finally, staff is supportive of the application with conditions pursuant to ordinance O1723, but suggests Planning Commission consider measures which could help mitigate the impacts on that intersection. And I'll take any questions.
Mr. Gooch, on reference to the, on that property, there, you said there is a laundry mat or laundry facility already established there? Is that open yet?
I'm not certain. I know they're, they're working on that recently. I don't know if that's been completed or not. Jeff, do you know?
Mr. English, Madam Chairman, that project is still under construction. It's not been occupied yet, and it's located on an adjacent property.
Do you know, is that, what kind of, I mean, it's a laundry facility, but is it just, what is it, I mean, is it doing hospital laundry, is it doing hotel laundry?
Yes, Mr. English, it's a commercial laundry, so they do a variety of different products that they provide to their customers. I don't know all the details of their clientele in their line, but usually it deals with hotels, you know, linens and towels and uniforms and things of that nature.
You don't, so, you don't know, at this point, you don't know if it's, how many vehicles are going to be coming in and out of there, do you? And that's not, there's no open road from that? The only road, access to that road is from the Centerport, I mean, from the Centerport Parkway, correct? There's nothing?
That's correct. The adjacent property has access to Centerport Parkway.
That's it.
And it's only means of access in and out of their property. Staff can verify what the vehicle count is for that use based on the approved site plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chairman, a couple more questions. Given the site location and its proximity to the airport, are there any M1 uses that would cause you some concern that might not jive well with the airport?
Well, I did look through the uses. Didn't see much jumping out at me as far as incompatibility in terms of the use. However, as it was noted previously, there are some uses that kind of stand out as far as high-traffic generators. Those include restaurant, convenience center, convenience store, building material sales and service yards, and vocational school. There's also some, some uses requiring a conditional use permit that are high generators such as medical clinic, motor vehicle sales, and then the commercial retail uses.
Okay, and how do we know we're not going to get something like a structure that has smoke stacks on this site? Or something else that might cause some problems for aircraft as they're trying to land on the runway?
As far as smoke stacks, I'm not sure if there are any uses by right in M1 that would have that type of feature.
So, manufacturing, manufacturing might not cause, might not have a smoke stack?
I guess it depends on the type of manufacturing.
Right, so, it's possible.
I suppose, I'd have to look at M2 versus M1, see if there's a distinction there between the intensity of manufacturing uses to have a real answer for you there.
Okay. Can you, again, show the, I think it was the GDP that showed proximity to the airport? I think it's not that one. It's closer to the front of the presentation.
Was it this one?
I guess that'll work. I don't know if with your, with your pen, you can show where the proposed buildings are at this point?
I can give you a general idea. Sort of, sort of in this area.
Okay, so, for the, for the remainder of the property, or the part that's closest to the runway, again, that, the first part of my question is for the remainder of the property, there's no guarantee that there won't be something further down on that parcel based on the fact that the GDP is not proffered.
Right, correct.
And for the building that's closest to the runway, again, I'd be concerned. I'd want to know what, how close that building is. Again, it's kind of a moot point because we really don't know where the buildings are going to be, but in general, I'm concerned about buildings close to the runway, especially since there's no, I think, what's 65 feet is the max proffered in the?
For the height, yes.
For the height.
Yes, sir. And that may be something the applicant's engineer is able to answer as far as distance from the airport.
If, if and when this gets approved, we wouldn't, and I say ultimately by the Board of Supervisors, the project wouldn't come back to us. We, we wouldn't see a site plan. We wouldn't have any ability to have any input on what actually ends up on the parcel in terms of the commission and the Board of Supervisors.
I'll have to defer to Mr. Harvey. Is there any Planning Commission input during the site plan process approval?
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Mr. Appicella, the Planning Commission member for that district would be notified of the TRC meeting and could provide input at that point. However, there is no other mechanism to bring the site plans back to the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors. Our code allows for administrative review. The exception would be if there was a conditional use permit, type of use that's being proposed on a property, or some other use that required a special exception that might go to BZA.
Although later tonight, we're going to talk about a potential change to the process that kind of eliminates the mandatory requirement for TRC. Is that correct?
No, the E-con, E-plans still will keep the TRC process in place.
Right, but there is not necessarily a TRC meeting. I thought that was going to be at the request of?
It would be at, as requested meeting, yes.
Right. And certainly, the airport authority might not have some ability to have some input on the final state of the site and what goes on that site. Is that correct?
Right. I think a suggestion was made about proffer relating to notification to the airport during site plan, and I guess there would be an opportunity for them to provide input, but it may not necessarily be required that they adjust the plan based on their input.
Mr. Appicella and Madam Chairman, the staff currently sends out notices to the airport authority for any site plan for a project that's in the airport compatibility zones, so they have an opportunity to weigh in if whether or not they have concerns. Certainly, if they have concerns, it may not result into an ordinance requirement that we can change specific aspects of their site, but usually our advisory comments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Maybe we can let the applicant come up, and then we can, maybe they'll answer some of the questions that we were already kind of thinking in our mind. Can we do that? Let's let the applicant, let's move forward, let the applicant come up, and then, and then we'll have another chance for questions.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Go ahead.
Lee Cherwick with Hildrup Properties. I guess I'm the applicant. Any questions I can answer, or I can run through a presentation, you tell me what's best for you guys.
I think, why don't you run through, quickly run through your presentation, and then we'll just probably stop you if we have a question.
That's fine. Brian actually touched on most of my stuff, so it'll be kind of a repeat, so I'll go quickly. First off, Stafford Airport Industrial Park. Some background information, Ramoth Road Investors bought it in 2010. Ramoth Road Investors is comprised of Danny Payne, or Daniel Payne, as well as Richmond McDaniel. Both of them are local Fredericksburg people that have done a tremendous amount of industrial work in the area. Mr. McDaniel probably has 15 to 20 different industrial buildings, and Mr. Payne probably has 10 to 15. And so, they were able to purchase this land. They had, I guess, originally planned on doing some sort of forestry-residential component, and with the additional industrial demand going up and down Centerport, they thought it'd be good to submit for rezoning. Let's see here, next up, 66 acres, two parcels, one, it looks like three, but one of them was actually bisected when the Centerport Parkway was realigned. It's currently zoned A1. It's got one entrance off of Centerport Parkway, and it actually has another entrance off of, an existing entrance off of Ramoth Church Road, rolling topography and access to utilities. Overall, kind of a high-altitude map of where, where it's located. Next up would be, you can kind of see these are the parcels that we're talking about, and there's also this little portion over here. And there's also this little portion over here. And this is just another aerial elevation showing you the surrounding, surrounding businesses. All right, so this is a conceptual plan, not proffering it. It's not being developed at this point to this plan. Basically, we are looking to transfer from A1 to M1 and wanted to give you an idea of how this could develop. Am I guaranteeing this is going, how it's going to be? No. But I wanted to show you potentially how it could be. One of the things that, to note is we're proposing, I think per the acreage and everything else, we could have up to 1.5 million square feet of industrial product on the property. Where that's just, it doesn't fit real well and it's just too much. So we scaled it back to, to a third, 500,000 square feet. On here, it does kind of address some, some ideas to give you how the property could lay out, but of course, when it comes time for development, it would go through the normal site plan process where everyone would have a seat at the table and be able to adjust and to modify things as needed. Some general impacts on the rezoning. Right now, it's currently serviced by two entrances. The primary entrance would be on Centerport Parkway, a secondary entrance off of Ramoth Church Road. After several discussions, including fire and rescue, they actually required us to keep the secondary entrance just because, hey, what happens if a tractor trailer turns over at the entrance? It still gives them an opportunity to, excuse me, access the project.
Mr. Cherwick, but if the, like you're just saying, you're not proffering these businesses coming here, so this could, it could be one business you wouldn't, may not need the entrance off of Ramoth Church Road, correct?
It may be someone that says, listen, I want to build a 50,000 square foot warehouse and have a nice quiet area where no one's going to bother me.
Right.
Then it's going to be developed as such.
So you're saying you're going to get Amazon down here?
I honestly, I knew that was going to come up. If Amazon is interested in the project, we would love to work with them. I got a feeling they're going to want more than 500,000.
Are economic development people listening?
I think they're going to want more than 500,000 square feet, but you never know. And so if you have any ends with Amazon, we'd love to talk to them. Utilities would be serviced by water and sewer. On here, you'll see some calculations. Basically just did the by right existing 22 residential homes versus what were proposed for 500,000 square feet. And we took these numbers based off of other warehouses and industrial products that we have in the area. As you can see, the proposed development would be about a third or maybe 25% of what the by right usage of water and sewer would be. Schools, if this is rezoned, we would no longer have any residential units on there, so there would be actually a lessening of an impact on the schools. Tax revenue, where it stands right now with an A1, and we went through and did 22 residential units, you would have an annual between real estate taxes and property taxes of roughly $79,000 a year. With a full build out of M1 zoning, we are looking at between real estate taxes and personal property taxes of roughly $500,000 a year. So about six and a half times the difference in, in tax revenue. Currently, because we are still considering forestry of timbering the property, it's in land use. Should the rezoning occur, we would be responsible for the five years of back taxes and a payment of roughly $21,000 will be due. Environmental, it lies within flood zone X, which basically means it's outside of the flood zone. Adjacent, I think Mr. Gooch addressed these concepts, but the south property is industrial, the east of the property is industrial. There are residential uses to the west and to the north. We are proffering, as well as the, the site plan mechanisms are in place, to provide a buffer to lessen the impact on the surrounding residential uses. There is a, historical wise, there is a cemetery on the property. Per the site plan process, we are required to give an easement access as well as a buffer and a fence to make sure, and that's no matter how it's developed, so that anybody that is relatives to the people in the cemetery can come and go as they need to visit their, their relatives. Proffers, we proffered the following, 5,000, 500,000 square feet of gross floor area. We will also dedicate 55 feet of right of way from the center line of Ramoth Church Road at no cost. We will use commercially reasonable efforts to develop the property where it's called no bird landscaping. That's to basically be a good neighbor for the airport. We are also proffering to do a three-foot berm and a solid row of evergreen broadleaf shrubs along Ramoth Church Road to provide a better visual buffer between the M1 use and the residential uses across the road. We are also proffering the fact that we will do an analysis to whether or not turn lanes will be required at site plan. Lastly, and this was a new one for me, we, we are proffering that should an office or hotel be built higher than three stories or higher, we will make sure it will be fire sprinklered as well as have a standpipe system in compliance and request from the fire marshal. That's about all I had, so I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments and concerns.
I have a couple of questions if I could.
Sure, Mr. Vane.
Sure.
You indicated that you're willing to do an analysis for turn lane at the site plan stage. Are you also, I didn't hear, but I, I'm asking, are you also proffering to construct that right turn lane onto Route 1 from Ramoth?
From right?
Or I guess it's from American Legion.
Which, which one are we talking about?
At, at American Legion and Route 1.
What I'm proffering is site specific.
Oh, site specific.
So if during our site plan process, it says, hey, we're doing 500,000 square feet and you tripped a left turn lane going from Ramoth Church Road, providing a turn lane into the entrance on Ramoth Church Road into this property, we will do that because in all quite honesty, it's going to be required per the site plan process.
Okay, so that you would construct?
It is required by a site plan. So if, if we do 100,000 square feet and that's all that's done and it's not required, I'm not going to build a turn lane. But however, if we do 500,000 square feet and it goes through the site plan process, which says, hey, because of the following components, you're required to do a turn lane into the property, then that is something we would have to do for a site plan.
All right. I'm concerned about the traffic on Ramoth Church Road.
Okay.
That many square feet generating that much traffic at night, everybody trying to get out and get over to Route 1 in all likelihood. I can envision tremendous backups to get out there and get on Ramoth Church Road. Did you look at any other opportunities for a roadway and access to Center Park, Center Park Portway, Centerport Parkway further south? It would require having a, a right of way across some other property, but it would be a very short distance of adjoining property. It seems to me that that might provide some relief because then some of the employees could take that exit and go the other way on Centerport and not?
What do you mean by the other way on Centerport?
Go on Centerport to the south.
North or south, okay.
South. And therefore not cause such a constriction at the?
Well, anyone coming out of the project that wants to go south, I mean, I can't guarantee what everyone's going to do, but the logical aspect would be to flow through the road leading to Centerport, make a right turn and flow down that road.
Yeah, except that if there's 400 cars ahead of them wanting to turn left, they can't get to Centerport to turn right. That's, that's the scenario I'm envisioning.
That we're going to have a stacking plan inside of our project that will not allow someone to turn right? I'm just making sure I understand.
I guess I'm asking that. Would, would there be dual lanes coming out to Centerport or to Ramoth Church that you'd have a left and a right turn lane to, to those?
I'll be, I don't have an answer for that as of right now due to the fact that we don't know how the project's going to develop. We do have intentions that Centerport is going to be the primary exit. And I know in going through this, we submitted our TIA through VDOT and other localities and they had their comments and VDOT was acceptable with what we're trying to do.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm still concerned about the traffic impact on those roads, obviously. So, all right.
I guess let me do this. Let me answer all the questions or if you would like.
No.
Our traffic engineer who actually did all of the TIA and the study is here and is happy to answer any questions you'd like on that as well. So you just let me know when you'd like to do it or now?
Let's finish up with you and then we can move on.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. English, I know you had a question.
Mr. Cherwick, have you spoke with the airport? Have you worked with them about what's going on with that? Have they kind of give you blessings or they?
I've been working, our site engineer for the project is Hamilton Palmer, who has been very tied in with the airport.
Okay.
For, for many years. And he agrees that this would be a great project for it. He even sees it as the fact where the airport could expand into this project if they ever got to the size and volume and needed additional hangers. I know there was some concerns with regards of buildings next to the airport of reflective surfaces, noxious gases, stuff like that. In, and I'll let Jeff or Brian correct me if I'm wrong, the, inside the comp plan, there is land use compatibility guidelines that have things like lighting, like aspects when you're locating next to an airport that I can't shoot beam straight up. I can't have smoke stacks going, I can't have reflective surfaces.
Yeah, th- those are guidelines. They're not mandatory, so that would be a concern of mine that even though we think that certain things should or shouldn't happen in the absence of proffering, for example, that your, your approach would be consistent with, you could proffer some language that says our approach would be consistent with the air, air, I can't even pronounce the acronym, consistent with those guidelines, there's no way we could enforce those.
And, I mean, I have no desire to have any planes land on buildings or things like that, so.
I don't think you do. That wouldn't be a good thing for anybody.
It was under the impression that that wasn't really, it was a requirement that had to be met. I could be wrong on that end.
Again, it's a guideline. It's not a requirement.
Okay.
So I guess maybe to, to try to address Mr. Appicello's points, would you be willing to just put a line or two in the proffer statement saying?
Originally in the process, I, I had proffered the fact of that the building, the property will be developed in compliance with the land use compatibility guidelines through the process because that was already in place, that was pulled out. And so i- if, if that's something that, you know, we need to advise.
Jeff, is, is that something we could add back in? Do you see any concerns with that?
If the applicant so desires they can make that proffer, yes.
That, I think that would be very helpful.
You're willing to do that then?
I, I need to basically read through everything, but if it's in compliance of basically saying that I'm not going to put reflective surfaces and I'm going to build as a good neighbor next to the airport, I think that's a reasonable thing to do and I think that, that should be fine.
You're willing to step up to do that?
I'm willing to do it along, I just want to read to what I'm committing to before I do that. But yes, if it, if what I envision the land use compatibility guidelines states, I would be willing to proffer that, yes.
Okay.
Other questions on the commission?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Appicello.
So my fellow planning commissioners wouldn't be surprised that I'm, I'm not a fan of generalized rezoning and that's what I consider this project to be because it involves a lot of uncertainty.
I understand.
I do appreciate that you've put a cap on the square footage and, and that being one-third of what could otherwise occur here, but it still leaves me some concern that we, we don't know what specific uses are going to go on these, on these, on this parcel. Some uses that are allowable by right are more intense than others. And I'm, again, I'm not saying you're going to do this, but you could put 10 restaurants on this site, which would far exceed the 36, 33 number of vehicles.
Correct.
And if you've driven down Ramoth Church Road, and I think Mr. English would agree, it is not one of the safest roads in Stafford County. So adding more traffic on there, even a small amount, is in my view, not very desirable. So I think one way to additionally ensure at my comfort level, and I think the rest of our planning commissioners' comfort, comfort level, and we've done this on other projects, where you're not willing to proffer specific uses, is to proffer a cap on daily vehicles per day. And I, I'm not going to throw out a number. I'm not going to say it needs to be 36, but I think 10,000 would probably be too much. So as you're looking at potentially the, the airport land use compatibility guidelines and potentially offering a proffer in that regard.
Sure.
I would ask you to consider a cap on the, the daily traffic count per day as, as one additional method to mitigate the traffic concerns that could stem from this parcel and the way it's, you know, rezoned.
That's something I will look at. I, I'll be honest with you. I, part of the reason why this process has taken so long, we, we tried our best to get someone on the hook and say, hey, because it makes less questions for you guys, less questions for us. At the end of the day, we had talked to several different groups about this project and they were very interested in it. However, we were the wrong zoning. So they're like, listen, we can't sit around. You've got zoning here, zoning there. It is our intent and I will review it. I, I'm not proffering to it at this point in time. However, some of the more intense uses that you see, I don't realistically see as a, a market-driven opportunity for us. I know, you know, I've been wrong before, I'll be wrong again and it may be something that occurs. However, from what we've looked at in basically Fredericksburg as well as Richmond, we generally see industrial products around the airports. I don't know how viable 10 restaurants would be at that location, but I understand your concern and I'm, I'm willing to take a look at it. Sure.
Okay.
There were a couple of questions that I, I know that were asked previously and I just wanted to address. The building in front of our property is Virginia Linens. It's a commercial-driven business that basically does linen services for businesses, for Quantico on a commercial basis. It's not something where you could go up and have your linen services done. It's, it's a large industrial warehouse. With regards to Ramoth Church Road, I understand that that road is not the newest, biggest, best-built road out there right now like Centerport Parkway. That is one of the things that we are doing. We are proffering 55 feet of right of way. So that way, when projects come along and improve roads, they generally have to go to each individual owner and negotiate or condemn right of way in order to take it.
Really quickly on that, Mr. Harvey, what's the average, what do we typically try to get for the right of way?
Madam Chairman, it depends on the category of road. In this case, as Mr. Cherwick said, this is in a comp plan for four-lane road. That's why we have a 55 feet from center line dedication recommendation. Two-lane roads generally 30 feet from center line.
We, we are dedicating enough right of way to meet your guys' plan in the future.
Mr. Appicello.
Yeah, so where is that in the CIP in terms of enhancing the, the road network on Ramoth Church Road?
The project, there is no project to improve Ramoth Church Road in a 10-year CIP currently.
So the 55 feet, while it's helpful, again, it's, it's only part of the, of the puzzle of trying to fix Ramoth Church Road. And there is nothing in the, in the near term to make that happen.
It saves, saves the county money in the long term when we can make improvements. Also, the applicant did provide the county with right of way for the reconfiguration of the Centerport Parkway interchange, or just going to be intersection.
Correct.
That created that offset small parcel. They did that to my knowledge without any charge to the county.
So that's, when they were straightening, because Centerport Parkway used to have a dogleg right and they came through wanting to straighten that out to make it safer, we gave it to them with no charge. And to be fair, there's a little triangular piece of land that we really can't do anything with because of how it relocated and outlined or lined up. And so by the fact that we're donating 55 feet of right of way, we've already realigned Centerport Parkway at no cost, kind of left with a little island of land that we really won't be able to use, and the fact that inside that development, the 55 feet of right of way, when we go for site plan or whatnot, it is there for clear cutting, it is there for smoothing, it is there for site distance to help makes Ramoth Church Road a safer road.
Sorry, I, I definitely appreciate where you're coming from and I'm not trying to beat this horse, but.
I understand.
I look at these projects in the context of what is allowable today.
I understand.
Which is 22 homes versus what you're proposing, which is a 500,000 square foot footprint on this property, which at a minimum you're saying is 3,300 plus cars, which is a lot more than 22 units could provide.
But also.
And so my concern is what is that going to mean for, for Ramoth Church Road as well as Centerport? I, we don't have to go any further. I, I'm just telling you that I think in the absence of certainty, again, some, some maximum daily vehicle traffic count would be helpful to, to me and I think to others who are reviewing this project.
Right.
Okay, so we have not done the public hearing part, so you'll actually get another chance to answer questions. So I'm thinking it might be really helpful to move forward with the public hearing. Then you can address all, any more questions plus the public comments that are brought forward, if any are brought forward.
Sounds good.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing for item number one on the agenda, the reclassification for the Stafford Airport Industrial Park. So if any member of the public would like to come down and speak on this public hearing, you can come to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute. And when the red light comes on, that means that your time has expired. Would anyone like to come down? Okay. Seeing no one rushing the podium, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back up here to the commission. I guess the applicant, you want to come back up and we can finish up our questions?
I also, my traffic engineer is here.
Okay.
Has done the ITE. Has done the ITE, I don't know why I'm walking away, done the traffic study, as well as looked at several things that staff brought to us. And so, he's got a presentation as well to address these, that if you guys have a few minutes, I'd like to have him run through and answer your questions.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and run through a few of those, yeah.
He's doing a better job than I will.
We should have started with that, no, I'm kidding.
I always wanted to use this, pardon me.
I have never seen it do that.
I learned that after far too many meetings. I'm John Riley with Johnson, Mirman, and Thompson, JMT Consulting Firm, and I know there's a lot of new faces here, Mr. Harvey will attest, I've been through a few of these, explaining traffic studies to, to the commission here. So, Madam Chairman and members of the planning commission, thank you for a couple of minutes just to shed some light on some of the questions that have been raised about the traffic, fair questions, all of them. I've got four quick slides, and I think it'll help put the, some of the results, and especially the Level of Service D question, that's kind of pesky, put that into perspective. But this is an aerial, I think you all can see, of, of our study area. So, our site is over on the left where the green star is. We originally went into VDOT and the county thinking all we needed to do was study the entrances and the soon-to-be realigned intersection. I think at the time we started this, the intersection of Centerport and Rameth Church was still under construction. After a lot of back and forth, the, the VDOT, and I think the county as well, asked that we include Route 1. And we felt like that was almost a mile away from the site, but it, it was apparent that there were concerns, and so, we did include the signal at Route 1 and American Legion. See if I can get this right. So, Mr. Gooch spoke to the Level of Service requirement. I've got a different, different part of the county's language that speak to Level of Service C. I think, as I see it, the goal is to meet overall Level of Service C at the studied intersections. So, for a signal, there's, there's kind of puts and takes, if you will, depending on which lane you're in, and you can control Level of Service to a certain extent with signal timing. And what we have shown in the study is this, and I'll focus on the signal, we can talk about other, other items. There's a table in our study that summarizes the Level of Service overall at the bottom, and also by individual lane movement for the Route 1, American Legion, Eskimo Hill intersection. And I'm going to try to use the highlighter here. So, I got very excited because after many, many studies in this county, it's extremely hard to get overall levels of service like we have here, B and C. So, I thought we're, we're in great shape, we're in absolutely great shape. I've got kids that are in school, I don't like the CCs, I really don't like Ds. Bs are great, Level of Service, though, a little different animal. It's very hard to get a B even, much less a C overall in Stafford County. What this, what the overall is, it's a weighted average. You take all the approaches of the intersection, and you average the delays for all of them to get that overall number. So, on an individual approach basis, in the AM peak, we have As, Bs, and Cs. In the PM, this is where we, we got into a little bit of a, I think, a, an issue or a concern, which is we have the two Ds, really one D, it's, it's the same overall for that approach. That's the eastbound leg, this is in the PM peak, year 2025. This includes background growth, if we do nothing, we've, we've grown traffic, there's other developments happening and others that will happen. We've grown traffic on Route 1 at 2% a year for 10 years in this study, and we've also grown traffic on Rameth Church, American Legion for 2.5% per year for 10 years, apart from our traffic. It's like layers of cake. We start with the existing traffic, we layer the growth, and then we layer Stafford Airport Industrial Park on top. All those layers are what you see here, and it turns out that, yes, we do have a D on the eastbound approach. To VDOT, that's fine, but I know that you all hold your roads to a higher standard C. What I would submit is that the overall C that we've achieved meets your comprehensive plan, and the D is, is, you know, there's kind of some winners and losers depending on which approach you show up on. We've got an A over here, we've got a lot of Bs. So, you take the good and the bad, you look at the aggregate, and you get a Level of Service C. To me, that's an excellent result. Enough about the table, though, there's one more slide. So, you might say, what does a D actually mean in real life? Traffic, obviously, is very personal, we all drive, so we all have an impression of what good and bad traffic is like. So, that D is on the west leg, so the eastbound approach. What's happening there, I'm going to back up a second, these are queue lengths, 95th percentile queues. So, 95th percentile queue is about the worst-case stacking of traffic you could expect to see, according to our study, in that peak hour. The result that we came up with in our model is 189 feet. So, on average, 20 to 25 feet per car, you're talking about maybe seven to nine cars backing up. This, I estimate that condition might occur three times in that hour. All the other cycles, you're going to get less than that. And the way our model shows this running is that that stack of cars there would get about 20 seconds of green time, and they would all get through. So, that's what this D is. Some folks would say if, if you get stuck for more than two red lights, that's unacceptable. That, that's not what's happening here. This D clears every cycle, and like I said, it probably only occurs two or three times in an hour. So, wanted to shed some light on what that is. I think when you look at the big picture, the dedication of Centerport Parkway right-of-way, the dedication of Rameth, Rameth Church Road right-of-way, the access points, which actually operate great, to Mr. Bain's question, they're going to operate with Levels of Service B. Even though we have a lot of cars coming out, there's not a lot of opposition to them leaving the site, so not, not at all worried about stacking for people getting out of the site, especially in the PM. We will be building the turn lanes needed, as the applicant said. And I think, when you look at the greater context, this intersection wasn't even in our study, we sort of included it as a favor, I think, just, just to show what would happen, that overall Level of Service is a C. We feel, and I feel personally, that it's, it's really kind of a speck of, a speck in the ointment, if you will, and I think there's something that we could all live with. So, hope that sheds some light, be happy to take any more questions on traffic.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. Could you, could you show me on your, if you have a slide, that where those turn lanes, if you, if you, if your site plan determines that a turn, turn lane is required, where those turn lanes would be?
So, yeah, I'll try to draw on here, this is probably too high altitude, but we projected possibly a left turn lane coming into the site on Centerport here. Can you see that? And then, likely a right-turn taper, not even a full turn lane, but it would kind of be a wedge, like a triangular wedge for right turns in on Rameth Church. That's, that's what our numbers indicate with the 500,000 square feet.
Okay, right now, there, there wouldn't be a dedicated left turn lane?
On Rameth Church?
No, from Centerpoint Parkway. Wouldn't need it, I, right.
There, there would be, that would be a dedicated left.
Right. Based on what you just said about Centerpoint Parkway not being a lot of traffic on there, would that, would that effort be better spent doing something more with the entrance into Rameth Church, from Rameth Church, rather than something off of Centerpoint Parkway?
No, we're, well, our projections are showing most of the traffic coming to and from the interstate direction or the Route 1 direction. So, we went back and forth with VDOT and the county a lot on where these trips are going to come from. We do think Centerport offers a free shot down to the interchange.
Don't disagree.
And a lot of the traffic will use that entrance.
So, you think most traffic, so if, if those buildings, as your, as your potential layout shows, if those buildings are all off of Rameth Church, you still think people would come through the backway from Centerpoint? Or would they go, or would they drive up to Rameth Church, make a left on Rameth Church, and then try to get in that way? That's my concern, is that I think most of the buildings that would be south on the lot would be warehouses, and you'd be have, you'd have a lot less traffic, I think, wanting to turn left off of Centerpoint Parkway, where most of them would want to drive into, drive into the businesses from Rameth Church.
Yeah, it's really, without a, without a final layout, I think it's somewhat speculative. We typically assume most people take the, the path of least resistance. If it's going to take them longer to wait at the stop sign to turn left on the Rameth Church after one or two trips, you know, these are probably delivery folks who get pretty familiar, and employees, and, and employees aren't going to take a long time to figure out.
No, no, I don't disagree.
Yeah, I, I see Centerport.
Right, it's based on what was commented before about, we really don't know what's going to be there, and if there are businesses there, then it may change the vehicle traffic on how they get in and out, whether they can, whether they have to, they can park and walk to the front of those businesses, whether they want to park in the front.
We assumed an interconnected site.
Sure.
So, anybody could get in from either entrance and get out the other entrance by traversing through the site. I think, at the time, it was a reasonable assumption, and I think if it's built out, interconnectivity would happen, and, and hopefully that provides a path of least resistance, so people don't, don't have to go through that stop sign at Rameth Church.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Is there another question?
Thanks, Mr. Randall, Mr. Appicella.
Yes, can you go to the next slide? I'm sorry, I guess the next slide after that.
Sure.
Okay, so, so these figures, calculations are based on certain assumptions, right?
Correct.
Okay, and those assumptions are based on, I think, in part what I heard from Mr. Gouge, which is this project being built out with mostly industrial uses, right?
Yes.
So, to the extent that this project changes, there could be, these figures could change to the better or to the worse.
Yeah, if it's still an industrial use by the book, this is the worst. If it's some other use, certainly, then you're talking about different calculations.
Right, so, what is a C, might not turn out to be a C?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other questions on the commission? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So, at this point, we'll bring it back to the, to the commission. Mr. English, this is in your district, what are your thoughts so far, and how you'd like to move forward?
I would like to go ahead and ask for deferment until our next meeting, and get with Mr. Chairwicke, and make sure we can work out the, the language as reference to the last proffer statement that you looked at, and some numbers, and then bring it back. So, that's my ask, that we just defer until our next meeting.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Mr. English, second by Mr. Appicella, to defer to the next meeting. Mr. Appicella, any further comments?
I think I've expressed my issues and concerns.
Okay, Mr. English.
No, the only thing I have is, I think this is a good way to go, try to get it A1, get it M1 like it should be, and to get that, get some building around that airport, so, and I think they've worked with airport, working with airport, and tried to get some resolution out of this, so I, I think it's going to be a good project, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission? All right, so, we can take a vote now. All right, the motion passes 7-0, see you next time. Okay, so now, we're going to move on to item number two on the agenda, which is a conditional use permit for a 512 convenience store in the Rock Hill District. Mr. Gooch, sounds like you are up for this one, too.
Good evening again, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Item number two on your agenda is a conditional use permit for a 512 convenience store expansion, and this is to allow the expansion of a vehicle fuel sales facility in the B2 Urban Commercial Zoning District and HC Highway Corridor Overlay District on parcel 19A142, consisting of 2.47 acres. The applicant is Nicholas Kachi, and the primary contact is Jeff Keith with Advanced Engineering LLC. This is in the Rock Hill District. Property is located on the south side of Garrisonville Road and east side of Patton Drive. Surrounding uses include B3-zoned office and A1-zoned church to the north, R1-zoned single-family residential to the south, A1 and A2-zoned single-family residential to the east, and B2-zoned adult daycare center to the west. The comprehensive plan designates property within the suburban land use designation. The plan notes that commercial developments within suburban designated areas should be conducted in a manner that minimizes visual and noise impacts on established residential Property is developed with the Patton K Plaza Convenience Center with several tenants. The CUP would allow for the expansion of the fueling station associated with the 512 convenience store, which is located on the southeast portion of the property. Parking is provided along the areas of the building that front Garrisonville Road and Patton Drive, and a service drive aisle runs along the back of the building. A cleared level area is located on the southeast edge of the property, this area would be utilized for the proposed expansion. The generalized development plan depicts existing conditions and the proposed fueling station expansion. Currently, there are two fuel pumps or four fueling positions on a single island that, a canopy for that island is shown in orange. The proposed expansion would replace the existing pumps and canopy and provide a total of four pumps or eight fueling positions under a single canopy, which is shown in red. Additional pavement would be provided in the existing cleared area to accommodate the expanded facility. Due to the location of the property in the Hcod, a sidewalk must be constructed along the highway frontage, and that is shown on the GDP. Although the expansion only applies to one tenant on a portion of the property, the sidewalk must be provided along the entire frontage of the parcel. The applicant has shown that again on the GDP, and that is a, one of the conditions. A seven-foot board-on-board fence would be provided along the property lines adjacent to the expansion area. The proposed fence would be consistent with the existing fence located along the western property line adjacent to residential uses. That fence is required by a proffer condition on the property. A future interparcel connection is also shown to the property on the south side of this development, and reserving a space for this connection is also required by proffers on the property. Since the, a use on the property is being expanded, the entire parcel will become subject to the current standards for buffering. Meeting those requirements is not possible without a major reconstruction of the entire parcel, so a departure from design standards would be required to allow for the existing minimal buffer conditions, particularly that between the property line and that service drive aisle. During this process, the applicant will need to demonstrate that landscaping will be provided across the entire parcel, parcel, excuse me, where possible, this should result in increased buffering across the entire parcel, particularly on those road frontage areas, where there's space for landscaping. The applicant has provided renderings of the proposed canopy within the GDP, and conformance with the styles, colors, and materials is conditioned. The proposed design is consistent with the existing canopy. Proposed conditions include general conformance with the GDP, there shall be no more than eight fueling positions on the property, the sidewalk is required along Garrisonville Road, a seven-foot board-on-board fence is required along the southeast property line, fuel canopy lighting restrictions, and speaker restrictions. For instance, there won't be any lighting of the fuel canopy on any side other than that facing Garrisonville Road, so, shouldn't be any impacts on adjacent residential properties from that perspective, and the fuel canopy design will be in conformance with the rendering provided. Staff finds positives as this is consistent with the land use recommendations in the comp plan, consistent with established development patterns. Conditions will help minimize impacts on adjacent properties and transportation network, and it will, a result in improvements across the entire parcel, not just the area that's being expanded, and that includes the addition of landscaping and sidewalks, and no negative aspects are noted. Finally, staff recommends approval of the application with conditions pursuant to resolution R1870. Now, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Anybody on the commission have any questions on this item? Mr. Randall?
Could you go back to the, the site over, do you know where the tank is located for this?
I'll highlight the tank in blue here.
Ah, they're there, okay. Ah, they're there, okay.
That is existing. The applicant has indicated that those tanks would be replaced during this process to adhere to current safety and environmental regulations, and they would be replaced in the same location.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's one of the concerns I have. Those tanks are adjacent to the residential properties on the other side of that fence, and I was just wondering if it would be possible to move the tanks maybe to the front of the site so that they're a little further away. I'm not so concerned about fire, but odors. When the tanker trucks come in and load up, there's always odors associated with that filling operation, so that might be something for the applicant to consider. And I, second question, you had mentioned about landscaping. Were you talking about along that fence between the property and the residential areas? Because there's no room there.
Correct.
And so the only landscaping they could be providing would be to the parcel where they've got the interparcel connection set aside. That would be the only area that landscaping could be done.
There is, in the area of the expansion, there's a overhead power line. They should be able to provide some level of landscaping along this portion of the property.
Yeah.
So really, the areas adjacent to the expansion itself should be better buffered than the remainder of the property.
I just had the impression you were saying they were going to landscape all along the existing fence, but they're not proposing that.
No, that's correct. That's the reason, one of the reasons they need to pursue a departure from design standards just because they can't adhere to the current buffer standards.
Okay, and on the canopy, I'm assuming that the canopy is taller than the fence, the existing fence, and so I'm a little worried about light spillage from lights under the canopy. There're not going to be any other floodlights or anything around the perimeter, is that right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. As long as the canopy only has lights pointing downwards, I think it'll be all right. There'll still be some spillage, but it won't be too bad. But I think we want to make sure that there're no floodlights to try and light up any other perimeter areas.
Right, and this will be subject to the lighting ordinance requirements, which controls the maximum level of lighting along property lines that are used for residential purposes.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Any other questions? Okay, I do have a few questions for you, Brian. Do we describe the type of landscaping that's going to be used?
We do not.
Okay.
That would be detailed in the departure application.
Okay, and then regarding the entrance, right now, that is pretty steep. It's a short, steep hill, and so you're coming down. Are they going to do anything to the entryway to make that less of a steep gradient, or is that going to stay the same?
Not that I know of, because they'd still have to tie back into this grade here for the existing parking and drive aisle, but I can defer to the applicant. He may know something I don't, as far as that's concerned.
Okay. All right, we're moving. Is there a possibility to even widen the entrance?
I'm not certain. I suppose there is a possibility, but again, I'm not sure.
I just, that's very close to my house, and this is a nightmare to get in and out of. And it is like you literally, if you drive a stick shift, and I feel bad for you, because I know I couldn't get up that hill, and when you're pulling in to get the gas, you can't turn around, you're like gridlocked in there, and then when you're trying to get out, you're going sort of uphill, and I just see that that's a potential issue. And my other question was, do we do any analysis if we're bringing in more pump stations? Obviously, there's going to be more traffic in and out of the gas station. There's no light right now at that entryway. So I guess my propositions would be one of two things. Either close the entrance off altogether and make all the traffic go down to the light that is there and come up through all the parking spaces over here you see on the screen on the left-hand side. You'd come and get there from that direction, or looking at putting a potential light in at that, at the curb.
Okay.
Just a couple of questions. Okay, so nobody else had any questions, so I'm going to go ahead and bring the applicant up if you'd like to come up and talk.
I'm Jeff Keith with Advanced Engineering. I'm here with the owner, Mr. Kachi. He's owned the property for 26 years, and the convenience store's been there about the same amount of time with no problems. They're asking for the minor expansion of the fueling facility just so they can compete with the newer gas stations in the area. The fuel tanks we discussed, the plans is, their existing tank is a single-walled tank. They're replacing that with up-to-date code safer double-walled tanks with containment.
Really quick, wouldn't they be required to do that? If they're out of code right now, shouldn't they be replacing tanks that are of current safety standards?
I'm not sure that they're out of code, but these are just safer tanks that they're wanting to install.
Okay.
So that's essentially the project. I think we've discussed it, so we're in agreement with the conditions set forth by the planning department, and we can answer any other questions you have.
Does anybody else have questions for the applicant? On this side? On this side? Okay, no questions. So, and the reason I'm kind of more vocal on this one is this is in the Rock Hill District. So the fuel tanks, have you looked at being able to move those previously?
We haven't brought up. The station's been in operation since 1992. The fuel tanks have been in local location, and they're not aware of any complaints from the neighbors of fumes or anything like that, so.
Okay.
That's something they could look at, but we haven't discussed it before. There hadn't been any complaints from that aspect of it.
Okay, and do you know how many accidents have been at that entrance?
No, I don't.
Okay, maybe we could get staff to follow up and let us know if there's been any accidents at that intersection there. Okay, thank you so much. We don't have any other questions right now, so then we'll move out to the public hearing, and then you'll be able to come back up one more time.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, sure. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move forward with the public hearing, so I see a couple people who can't wait to come down here. So you'll have three minutes to talk. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute. Hang on one second. You'll have one minute to talk, and then when the red light comes on, your time will have expired, and if you could state your name, your address, and the district that you reside, and this is a point where you'll get to conversate with us. You'll be able to talk, but we will not be able to answer questions.
Okay.
Okay?
Could you put that picture up?
Can we have the computer, please?
No, the visual, the Google type picture?
Ariel.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're having a computer malfunction apparently. Hang on one second.
While we're doing that, let me address what you addressed.
All right, there you go.
Okay.
Name, address, and district, really quickly.
My name is Larry Lumbrue. I live on Sixth Patton Drive, which is right behind the subject.
Could you speak into the microphone for us, please?
Yeah, my name is Larry Lumbrue. I live right behind the shopping center, in this area right here. And the problem is, I've been there since 1978, two-lane road. Now it's four-lane road with shopping centers all over the place. All of the water that falls out of the sky goes right in front of my house. My ditch has been rebuilt by the state three times. It needs to be done again. You can't put 10 pounds of water in a five-pound bucket. It don't work. There's, everybody knows that there's erosion problems in Vista Woods and Garrisonville Estates. It's a known fact. If you take this property or this portion, which absorbs water and cover it with hardtop, I've got more water coming through my yard. I've asked the state, I've asked the county to address it. I'm not opposed to this at all. I'm opposed to the fact that I get no relief from all of this damn water coming in front of my house. My backyard floods. The water comes off of the building, is supposed to go down behind the building into a retention pond, and when there's overflow, I have a flood going down the side of Sixth Patton Drive. All of this used to be property or that was absorbed. And the other thing you mentioned was ingress and egress, the hill. If I'm coming out and you're trying to come in, there's no room for two cars at the same time. And your question about an accident, within the last three or four months, someone tried to turn in to the gas station, and some idiot who, the speed limits on 610 are suggestions. Some idiot plowed into the back of that car with kids in it, because they slowed down to turn in. It's a very narrow turn, egress, like you said. If it did get widened, it would be great, because two people, one could go out and one could come in at the same time. Right now, it's, if the person leaving is hogging up, excuse me, is hogging up the entrance, the next person's going to slam on their brakes because they can't turn in.
Thank you.
So that addresses what you said.
All right, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Well, that's what the state and everybody says about my ditch, too. My time is up.
Thank you.
I've had to go steal rocks to fix my own problem. It's called reallocation of county assets.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
My name is Lawrence Kimes. I'm the property owner at 307 High Street, directly behind the proposed improvement. In reference to the tanks, I have called the Stafford Dispatch for the gasoline smells on more than one occasion. So the location of the tanks, when the wind blows, it smells like gas, and I don't know whether there's a leak going on, somebody's pumping, so I'm all for relocating the tanks, because once again, it's right across from my property line. In reference to the fencing, fencing would not be enough for sound abatement, because right now, everybody's clicker. You hear every time somebody locks their cars to go in, I'm hearing clickers all day long. Within the last six months, they put a light up which shines directly into my bedroom, so at night, I've got daylight. So I don't know if there's a light, if there's current restrictions on that, but they've got a light pointing backwards, which like I said, goes directly into my bedroom. So I have objections on not putting in more landscaping for more sound abatement, because I'm hearing all the cars and all the conversations and all the sounds that I'm hearing. Water also is going to be potentially an issue unless it's directed into the retention pond, and then where's that overflow going to go? Or is it going to come right directly into?
His yard, he's going to have a swimming party.
My neighbor, what can I say? Security is also, because we get more, many people come around the fences trying to cut through my yard and my neighbor's yard to get up there, and it'll just kind of exacerbate that, because there'll be more, well, anyway. Let's see, security, once again, fencing and, you know, put some thorns or some other landscaping up to a butt. Can't think of it. I think that's about all I've got right offhand, but like I said, I have called the county fire department about the gas smells, the gas fumes.
Okay.
I think that's all I've got right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you think of anything else, you can always feel free to email us.
Okay.
Perfect. We can get you the email addresses.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else would like to come down?
Hi, my name is Jill Walker, and I live at 307 High Street as well. Mr. Kimes is resident, and I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, gas smells, especially in the summer, just wafting over, and we've had to call because we didn't know if there was a leak or, you know, what was going on with that, and security is definitely an issue, because with more light and more sound, there's going to be more people wanting to come through our yard to get there. And yes, there's people that actually say, well, we just want to jump the fence, you know, and I'm like, I hope you get poison ivy from going through my yard, you know? And the noise now is terrible. If there's double the amount of cars going in there, it's going to be even worse. So, and they're talking, I think you mentioned something about you wouldn't be putting up any more fencing behind that would take care of sound, noise, and light and all that. I think that needs to be addressed. Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to come down and speak? Okay. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing, and if the applicant would like to come back up and address any of the things brought up in the public hearing, and then we'll move on to the planning commission questions.
I think touching on a couple of the items, the entrance is a full commercial entrance, full width commercial entrance. I believe it's 30 foot. We meet the requirements for BDOT from separation from the intersection. It's a good 200 foot from the intersection or so, but the entrance is a full commercial entrance. With the addition of the additional pavement, the entrance configuration will be going from coming in and making a 90 to it's almost a straight-in entrance, so the improvements will, the proposed plan will improve the entrance situation by taking out that 90-degree turn they have in there right now. But it is a, it is a full, it is a full width entrance. The erosion situation.
I'm sorry, excuse me one second. Looking at the drawing, you're not proposing any changes to the entrance in terms of turning movements to get in and out, other than if they go to one of the fueling stations, one of the new fueling stations, but you've still got the problem of vehicles coming from the, let's say, the parking area and coming over and having to make that turn to get up to the highway. They're not, they're not given enough distance to really align themselves perpendicular to the highway and be out of the way of somebody else turning in, and I think that's sort of what Ms. Vinuch was implying, and one of the residents there, that the cars in the parking area that are trying to get out are blocking the entrance for cars on 610 to come in.
Right, I understand, I understand.
So I think that the idea of maybe widening that entrance would be really a viable alternative to help.
That is something we absolutely could look at.
Okay, and I think, well, all right, I think you should look at that.
Yeah, we absolutely could look at that.
And Mr. Harvey, just for my own education, he said that that's a typical size for a commercial entrance, it's 30 feet.
That's correct.
And that's for both in and out?
Yes, ma'am.
To allow ingress users?
There are, VDOT will allow wider entrances under certain circumstances.
Okay, gotcha.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Randall?
Is it, currently that in and out is not marked, correct?
I don't believe there are any pavement markings on the entrance.
Would that, you know, maybe that- Would that, you know, maybe that's something that you could do is mark the pavement so that it's clear.
They absolutely could.
Coming in and out, coming out. The other thing that some businesses are using are, are stanchions, you know, movable stanchions that you could put in there that was to completely delineate, this is the out, this is the in.
Yeah, they, they could absolutely delineate the traffic flow.
I think there's some things that we need to do in order to, to, to fix that. Most of the questions have been revolving around that entrance. And so there may be some things you need to look at that could potentially alleviate or mitigate some issues at that point.
We absolutely could do, do some improvements like that.
Okay.
Wouldn't be a problem.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead.
The other thing, as far as the tank, until tonight, I wasn't aware of any, any, the owner wasn't aware of any complaints. But they certainly could look at relocating the tanks to the front of it. I don't guess that would be any issue to do that.
A question, I mean, if you said you haven't heard any complaints, if they've called the fire department or the nine-one-one on it, the fire department, something had to be coming by and checking with you. So you haven't had the fire department, anybody coming by?
No, I've heard.
That's the owner, I think.
Any complaints that have been brought to us, to our attention.
Do you operate the convenience store or you're just the owner of the property?
We're just the owner of the property.
Okay. I do love what you've done with the concrete, the sign, the signage, that looks awesome. We go to that dry cleaner and she's very happy with it, too.
We're doing a complete facelift on it.
Looks good.
We're trying to create the center, make everything look nice. I think personally, I feel it's gonna be one of the nicest looking buildings on Garrisonville Road.
It does look nice.
We're still in the process. So we, we did add, we, we had some concerns that there wasn't enough lighting. So we upgraded the lighting to LED lights. We don't have any shining in any of them. They're in the same positions they've always been since nineteen ninety-two. They didn't move them in any way. So we're just kinda trying to make the area safer so we don't get people crossing fences and all that. Because I've heard that from some neighbors, some students hanging out. And we're just trying to deter all that as well.
Could you meet with these people and maybe say?
Never. Just the first one.
No, I'm just saying, I'm asking you, would you meet with these residents?
Absolutely, absolutely.
At nighttime and see what their issues are, maybe try to correct it?
Absolutely, sure. Absolutely. I don't have any problem with that whatsoever.
Can we look at the drainage issue as well while we're looking at all this?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
This gentleman's yard's flooding every time.
Yeah, the drainage issue would absolutely be taken care of in the site plan portion of it. We'd have to meet all the new state regulations as far as outfall and retention and all that type, all that type of thing. So the whole site would have to be brought into compliance.
Yep.
Yeah, the whole thing would be, have to be brought into compliance with the site plan.
You don't-
I'm, I'm sure it had to come into compliance last time, but it's not working. And I've been the recipient of some of that before, too, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, you know, the newly, newly dressed drainage regulations are pretty stringent, a lot more stringent than what they have when they develop the property.
Yeah, I would say visually, you're adding ten to fifteen percent additional impervious cover to that site. So that's a significant change.
Yeah, our, our footprint is a little bit under ten thousand square foot or whatever impervious footprint is on it.
Okay.
Any other questions on the commission? No, no other questions? Okay. I think as far as my comments, I, I think that it would be great if you guys could, could look at potentially moving that fuel tank a little further from the residences and, and let us know what possibilities there are, like propose like an additional site and determine whether or not you'd be able to build that into the proffers and moving that. I also would love for you to guys to bring us a couple of alternatives for entrances, whether that be widening it or closing that one down and moving everybody to the light or widening it and adding a little concrete median in the middle and working with VDOT on what the options are there. I realize not, you know, we, what we might be thinking is maybe not ideal in VDOT's perspective. So if you could just come back to us with, with what those options are. And then really coming up with a good stormwater management mitigation.
Absolutely, that definitely-
Technique.
Part of the site plan process.
And, and definitely meeting with the residents and trying to be a good neighbor to them. And if there is a light shining in somebody's bedroom, you know, let's try to figure out how you can address that light and, and make sure that that wouldn't happen in, in the new canopy. And then also addressing if there needs to be something done on the back of that property to help buffer the noise and whether it's upgrading the fence or putting some type of a sound barrier. I'm sure there's techniques that can, can lower the, the sound carrying from the tank area to the residence. So those would be my comments. And since the commission doesn't have any others, I'm gonna virtually pass the gavel over to, to Mr. Appicella, the vice chair.
Ms. Vanuch, this is senior district. How would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Appicella. I think at this point, I, I'd like to grant you guys a deferral, to give you time to, to work on these issues and instead of us taking a vote now. Because my guess is that you probably wouldn't have a successful vote if we voted right now. To give you time to work through all of this and then come back and, and give us some options as to, to how we can address some of the, the concerns that the public had. I would say probably the end of April, if, if you feel like that is a good amount of time. Do you think you could have that feedback back by the end of April?
I think we probably could, yes.
Okay. All right, so, so my motion is to make a motion for the end of April.
So there's a motion to defer to the second meeting in April, seconded by Mr. McPherson. Any further comments, Ms. Vanuch?
No, I made them all on the front end.
Mr. McPherson?
No.
Anyone else? Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries seven zero. Passing the baton back to you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys.
And Madam Chairman, for the applicant and the citizen's information, the second meeting in April is April twenty-fifth.
Okay, so for those of you who are in the audience and are curious about how this will track, the next meeting will be April twenty-fifth. Okay. So moving on to item number three on the agenda, the amendment to the zoning ordinance on definitions, specific terms for home businesses. I'd like to recognize Ms. Blackburn for her favorite topic.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This evening, you are to consider an amendment to the county code section twenty-eight dash twenty-five that will create a definition for e-commerce, home business two and handicraft, and amend the definitions for home business, home occupation, home business rural, manufacturing light and heavy, and retail sales. This amendment would also amend section twenty-eight dash thirty-five tables of standards and uses, or uses and standards, I should say, to provide for these business uses to be permitted as accessory uses to single-family dwellings in the county and either as by right uses or as special exceptions. And this subject was first discussed back in August of twenty seventeen. And the Board of Supervisors referred resolution R seventeen dash two-ten to the Planning Commission for the recommendations and modifications to what was then proposed ordinance zero seventeen dash thirty. And this ordinance was proposed to create a definition for e-commerce and clarify its use in the zoning ordinance. This proposed ordinance was initiated due to requests for business operating in a dwelling, and those requests were increasing and becoming more complex. And in particular, the request to sell and conduct firearm transfers from a residence. And to obtain a federal firearms transfer license from the United States Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms and Explosives, one must have a physical location for the business that is open for inspection twenty-four hours per day, and the transfer of firearms must be an in-person transfer. Currently, the zoning ordinance defines a home business that has customers coming to the dwelling. And if the property is owned A two, rural residential, or one, suburban residential, R two, urban residential medium density, or R three, which is urban residential high density, a home business requires approval of a special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the, the intent of this proposed, original proposed ordinance was to draft a definition for e-commerce that would allow sales of firearms from a dwelling without requiring the special exception. And this would be done without affecting the regulations for the sale of the other commodities from a dwelling. Well, at the October eleventh, twenty seventeen meeting, the Planning Commission was informed that the county has no authority to impose different standards between a home-based firearms transfer business and another home-based business, and this is per Virginia Code one fifty-six point two dash nine fifteen. Well, with that information, the commission then focused their discussion on businesses conducted in the home towards the definitions of home occupation and home business. They wanted to know the differences between the two as they are defined in the zoning ordinance, how Spotsylvania County regulated businesses out of the home, and how businesses might impact a neighborhood. You, as the commission, mentioned items such as how many customers a day, deliveries of merchandise, and number of employees. Questions were also asked concerning the difference between manufacturing and creating items from sewing arts and crafts, et cetera. Staff provided the regulations for the home businesses from the various counties, and you have those attached in your packet, and highlighted the differences in the two definitions of home occupation and home business. And upon review of all the material, the commission agreed that the subject required more time to discuss and determine the best course of potentially changing the regulations for all types of home businesses in addition to e-commerce activities in the county. They, you voted to request more time from the Board of Supervisors, and resolution R seventeen dash two ninety-eight was granted by the Board of Supervisors to give you a hundred-day extension. And the Planning Commission, you created a committee and met in January and February to work on the proposed ordinance. You reviewed the ordinance from the surrounding counties, drafted regulations for businesses that can be conducted out of a dwelling, amended them, and agreed on the regulations in the proposed ordinance zero eighteen dash oh-six. Now currently, the zoning ordinance defines three types of occupations and/or businesses that can be operated out of a home. They are home business, home occupation, and home business rural. The home occupation is permitted in dwelling types, in all dwelling types, and does not allow for any customers to the dwelling. The home business is only allowed in a detached, single-family dwelling, allows for customers to the home on a limited basis, and requires approval of a special exception in all the districts except the A one agricultural district. And a special exception is an approval granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The home business rural is the only, is only permitted in the A one district, allows for customers to the dwelling, employees at the dwelling, and permits a large amount of square footage to be devoted to the business. An approval of a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals is also required. In addition to these types of businesses, this ordinance, the ordinance also defines retail sales, manufacturing light and heavy, which have an impact on how the business can be conducted. Proposed ordinance zero eighteen dash oh-six amends the regulations for these uses, creates a new type of home business, amends definition and creates new ones. A summary of the proposed changes are as follows. It amends the definition of home occupation to include e-commerce as a type of business, and further clarifies how a home occupation shall be operated. No other changes are suggested. It amends the definition of home business to home business one and allows the following: the use as an accessory by right use in all single-family detached dwellings without approval of a special exception, customers to the home with a limit on the number per visit and the number of visits per day, hours of operation and off-street parking to be provided. The or, proposed ordinance also creates a new use, home business two, as another level of home business permitted in a single-family dwelling. It allows and restricts the number of employees, limits the number of customers and the hours of operation, provides off-street, excuse me, parking, regulates location and amount of indoor and outdoor storage, and requires approval of a special exception. The proposed ordinance also amends home business rural to clarify the requirements for the use, which includes the size and type assigned permitted for such a use. And this ordinance also creates a definition of e-commerce and handicraft, and amends the definition of manufacturing light and heavy and retail sales to better reflect the standards set forth in the home business categories. And this proposed ordinance provides performance standards for conducting businesses out of a residential dwelling by limiting the number of customers and hours of activity, restricting such activity to single-family detached homes, and reducing the need for additional approvals for such businesses. The committee reviewed the definitions and amended them so they reflect these regulations and did not conflict with them. And staff believes the proposed ordinance is a comprehensive change to how businesses can be conducted out of residential dwellings, and recommends the commission vote to forward this document to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. And the, per the resolution R seventeen two ninety-eight, action on this ordinance is required by April second. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. Mr. Bain?
Yes, I have just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
In the home business one category, the business has to be contained entirely within the residence? Or what I'm, what I'm wondering about, if somebody has a detached garage, can they use their garage? Or does that automatically classify them as a home business two?
If I remember correctly, um, let's see.
Because there's no, I don't think there's any mention of a auxiliary building under home business one.
Then there would not be. It would only be allowed to be conducted within the home.
Within the residence itself.
Within the residence, yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify that.
It was the home business two that does start allowing for accessory structures to be used.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Any other questions on the commission? Yes? Nope. Okay. No questions? All right, so then we'll move. Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. You did so good, there's no questions. So now we'll move forward to the public hearing portion for the proposed ordinance amendment of home businesses. Again, same, same, come down, state your name, address, and the residence that you reside. You have three minutes to speak, one minute when the yellow light comes on, and when the red light comes on, your time has expired. I see a gentleman coming forward.
Jack Rodenrath. I'm the owner of J.C. Firearms. I've been conducting my business for seven years. I'm not sure where the complaint came from. I'd love to know where that complaint came from. I deal with people from the Secret Service, from the DA, from the FBI, CIA members, just about anyone you can imagine I've dealt with. I've helped them out. You guys like a good story? I got a great one. So I had an individual come in. He bought his AR-15 online, Bushmaster, pretty cheap one. He arrived to my place of residence that I work out of. I have just two rooms I work out of, and that's it. I work by myself. I see you guys talk about, you know, water and lighting and those sorts of things and traffic flow. I don't have those issues. Actually, I have a back parking lot that can only accommodate a couple of vehicles. I do things by appointment only. So I don't have people just come in and flood whenever they want. I specifically put on my website, I do not want people just randomly showing up because I don't appreciate that. I don't want signage. I don't advertise signage. I've never had a break-in, never. And for good reasons. I talked to the Frederick, Frederickburg, two detectives, I've had two calls from, in the past. And it was about gun stores being broken into, just about all of them been hit. I've never been hit. And it's mainly because it's too dang dangerous to break into a house that has firearms. It's very dangerous. I don't want a storefront. I'm not interested in a storefront. I've considered this many a times. They're too easy to break into, they advertise too much, and the amount of business I do is not a lot. It's only about maybe on average, one to maybe six people a day at most. I've never had a complaint again in seven years. So quite interested on that. Now, back to my story I was telling you about where I think this complaint originated from, is I got an individual locked up and put in jail. He was mentally ill, and he quite, he came to my premise intoxicated. It was extremely irresponsible what he did. And it was right around the timeframe that she mentioned that this happened. I actually stopped to go to court over this guy. So he shows up, he's intoxicated. Now, I didn't originally, initially see this, I didn't orig, you know, I don't look for intoxicated individuals buying AR-15s. That just doesn't happen. It's the first time I've ever seen it in my entire life. So he comes in, and I had one other individual in the home with me that I was working with at the time. He'd bought in something else online, and I just had it shipped in to do the transfer, and that was it. In this process, he comes in, he goes up, he's looking around in the room, he's looking around different things. And I asked him, I said, hey, do you own any of the firearms? And he snapped at me. You know, he said, what does that matter for? And I thought, my gosh, who is this guy? Yeah, I've, I mean, I'm like, I'm like Santa Claus. If you guys have understood, there's no one else in the room, by the way. I'm like Santa Claus. People come in, I know.
It's a cliffhanger.
You're gonna have to hear the end of the story because it's a good one.
I know, but unfortunately, we can't.
Okay.
You can email us.
Well, I mean, I've seen the other people that are owner and operator- Well, I mean, I've seen the other people, the owner and operators, and that are permits...
If you're just a resident member of the public, attending the public hearing, this is a bill amended specifically for you on your property.
Okay, well, you mentioned firearms, so I'm just curious where the complaint came from, I have no idea. But the story I'm telling is compliant to where this complaint came from.
This is supposed to be a back-and-forth, so what we're gonna do is we'll see if anybody else wants to come to the public hearing, and assuming no, and then we're gonna close it, and then bring you back to the commission to address the complaint that you brought up.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Too bad for the story.
Okay, does anybody else want to come down? Okay, since no one else is coming down, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Ms. Rappicella.
Yes, can we ask Ms. Blackburn to step up?
Yep, Ms. Blackburn, come on up.
So I just want to clarify, I'm not quite sure the gentleman who just spoke about the specific complaint, he was alluding to, it sounds like he has a concern about his firearms business, and just to clarify, a firearms transfer business can occur in, under an HB1 use by right and under an HB2 use with a special exception.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so really, there's no significant impact potentially to his business? And especially if he's already got a business in place, I think the rules are grandfathered, so...
Exactly, and as I stated, and hopefully it was clear, that this was to remove the requirement for a special exception for any type of business, particularly a firearms business of people coming to your home.
Well, it wouldn't remove all special exceptions, it would remove the special exceptions within the parameters of an HB1 use.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Randall, did you have a question?
I did, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is clear that this ordinance needed to be changed. By the prior ordinance, everyone that did a business out of their home had to have a special exception. They had to come before, at the board, they had to get a special exception. We worked diligently to make sure that special exemptions were for special exceptions requirements, and that we, we were able to, to make the HB1 and HB, HB1 so that if most businesses, home-based businesses fell under those guidelines, and allowed those businesses to be able to go on under normal circumstances without anything else. So I just wanted to make that note, I appreciate the staff's efforts to help us put that together, and that's, that's it, thanks.
Well, thank you, and if I may say something, I do appreciate all the work that the committee did. It was a large task, and you all did very, very well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? Mr., no, okay. I'm gonna make just a couple comments, I don't really have questions, I just want to make a few comments to address a couple of things. The first, Mr. Randall was absolutely right, most of the businesses that were operating out of a hole, out of a home were against the previous ordinance anyway, and I, I know in previous meetings I brought up this, and just wanted to reiterate things that were like Lou LaRoe, Rodan and Fields, or Mary Kay, were technically being operated illegally based on the, the previous ordinance out of the home. And so we were really trying to update our ordinance with the times, and, and allow some of these stay-at-home moms to be able to earn an income from their home, but with recognizing that there are impacts on the neighbors, there are impacts on the neighborhood, and to make sure that there were certain restrictions in place to allow that to happen, but to also continue to be a good neighbor to your neighbors, and not have, you know, 50 different people coming to your home every day. And in regards to the gentleman who came forward to speak about the firearms business, and the whole definition of potential retail sales, that was something else that I was very adamantly strong, that we not restrict gun sales from F, from licensed FFL dealers, because otherwise, it's just gonna happen in a parking lot, in some shopping center, to somebody who doesn't do a background check. My father is a previous military police officer, and also holds a FFL dealer's license, and I know how important it is for them to do those background checks, and, and I think if we can make it easier for these FFL dealers to be able to operate, so they can do background checks before selling a weapon to somebody, that would be great. So it's, it's not meant to mitigate that, and, and I hope that, that is not the interpretation that the public got, that this was impacting the, the FFL dealers or, or gun sales. It's really meant to impact multiple burdensome trips to a home, or manufacturing things in a home that shouldn't be manufactured. So those are my comments. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to chime in on? Okay, so, the next...
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Rappicella.
I'd like to offer a motion recommending that we send forward to the board the revised ordinance 018-06.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Rappicella, a second by Mr. Randall to approve. Mr. Rappicella?
Yes, ma'am, I have some comments to make. I would like to say that the Planning Commission and its subcommittee worked on this issue for about six months. I want to thank my colleagues, Ms. Manuch and Mr. Randall, as well as our terrific staff, for their work on this, on this matter. Our overarching goal was to modernize Stafford's approach to dealing with home occupations and home businesses. It takes into account the growing amount of commerce that's occurring over the internet and out of people's homes. The new regime attempts to strike a balance between encouraging residents to conduct certain business activities out of their home, while also addressing and mitigating potential impacts on their neighbors. As staff mentioned, under the revised home occupations and the new home business one definitions, a number of business activities can occur by right in all residential districts, some of those activities which were not previously allowed by right. And under the home business two and rural home business definitions, again, certain business activities can occur with an approved special exception from the county's Board of Zoning Appeals. I think this measure provides a scaled approach, based in large part on where, when, and how many customer visits would be appropriate in a given set of circumstances and in given locations. As part of our process in determining where these kinds of activities could occur, we considered the availability of sufficient and dedicated off-street parking. Again, parking was a very strong consideration in our minds, and the proximity of potential home businesses and neighboring residential units in determining where those potential customer visits could create conflicts. So we were trying to avoid those set of circumstances. It also provides a mechanism for firearms transfers to occur, again, in H1B use by right and under the HB2 use with a special exception. I think another important thing that we did is we created a new handicrafts definition. This ensures residents can make crafts out of their home without being considered a manufacturing operation. So I think the bottom line, I believe this is a balanced, improved measure, and that brings Stafford County into the 21st century. Thank you, Mr., Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rappicella. Mr. Randall?
I have no additional comments, thank you.
All right, anyone else on the commission like to comment? Okay, seeing no further comments, we shall take up a vote now. Okay, so the motion passes 7-0. Items four, five, and six are deferred, items on the agenda for either April 11th or April 25th. There is no unfinished business and no new business. So now we move on to the Planning Director's report. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. At the Board of Supervisors meeting last week on the 20th, they were very busy, and sent a number of things off to the Planning Commission, and also took some decisive actions. In particular, I'll start with cluster development. The Board of Supervisors adopted a new ordinance and, that affected cluster development, specifically where cluster development can occur in a county. The new map that reflects where the cluster development can occur generally encompasses the urban services area and, and areas adjacent to the urban services area. The ordinance would specifically do that, and it means to look at complying with state code, because as you recall, the Planning Commission previously held a public hearing at the board's request regarding repeal of the cluster regulations. So what in effect happened with adoption of the map, it was a partial repeal. So the regulations were repealed for properties located outside the designated area, but still remain in effect for properties within the designated area. The board also sent some ordinance amendments for the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing on, as well as a comprehensive plan amendment. Those amendments, the, the board had requested action by the Planning Commission by the end of May. The comprehensive plan amendment would adopt the map that was referenced in the ordinance amendment. Also, it would restructure some of the existing language and performance recommendations for cluster developments, to have one set of recommendations for cluster development in the urban services area, and then also cluster development in the rural areas. The comprehensive plan would also address and explain how the cluster-approved areas were derived, specifically stating how that area meets the minimum, minimum 40% requirement in state code for undeveloped land to be eligible for cluster development within the locality. The board also, with its ordinance amendments, asked the Planning Commission to take a look at restructuring our zoning ordinance and how we list cluster development. In particular, right now, for each one of the zoning categories, A1, A2, and R1, in the standard use table, lists cluster development as one of the permitted uses, and has setback standards, lot sizes, and things of that nature. So that information would be taken out of the main table and put into a separate table, so all of our cluster standards would be in one location. Also, the ordinance would establish some performance standards for cluster developments and address the ability to use or not use stormwater management ponds, and major utility easements towards counting towards the minimum required open space. The board also, on another note, made referrals to the Planning Commission and the Utilities Commission on sep, two separate ordinances dealing with community drain fields. The Planning Commission ordinance amendment would be amending the subdivision ordinance, specifically to require that all drain fields be on the lot where the residence is located. So that, in effect, would no longer allow community drain fields for new subdivisions. And then finally, the board referred a proposed amendment to the zoning and subdivision ordinance for electronic plan review. That's something our Public Works Department has already implemented, and planning and zoning is working on that as well. So applicants for site plans and subdivision plans could submit their applications online in an electronic format. It's noted that a number of code sections talks about submitting paper copies of plans, specific size of the plan sheets, and number of sheets in a plan, which would no longer be applicable in the context of electronic plan review. So that's the essence of the proposed code changes with that amendment. Both the community drain fields and E-plans, referrals don't have a specific time limitation, we would default to the normal code standards for community drain fields, since this is a subdivision ordinance amendment, it'd be 60 days the Planning Commission would have to hold a hearing and make recommendations. With E-plans, it's both a subdivision which has a 60-day time limit and a zoning part which has a 100-day time limit. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Mr. Rappicella?
Madam Chairman, I don't know if my, my colleagues have had a chance to look at any of the items that the Planning Directors just spoke about, but I was wondering if we could go through some of them and perhaps consider sending them to a public hearing with any modifications that you all think is appropriate. Maybe we can start from the bottom up on the E-plans.
Okay.
The only change that I can see would be under, on page three, on the E-plans, which I think is listed as number eight, under section 22-61, where it talks about who may trigger a meeting. I would ask that we include as county staff as another entity that could generate a meeting or request a meeting. If county staff is too broad, then perhaps the Planning Director.
We, just, on a couple of the agendas, the links didn't come through, so they weren't able to follow along, so we were trying to figure that out.
So this is, I think this is an item we talked about at the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before that, I can't remember, but we, we were asked for some comment on this potential change, that, that would no longer make these TRC meetings mandatory, but that they would occur at the request of certain individuals or bodies. So, again, the only change that I saw potentially missing, because I mentioned it at that point in time, is I thought, again, maybe some county department or staff might also want to have a meeting.
Yeah, to add in that provision.
Yes.
And, Mr. Harvey, we have to send, we have to vote on when to send this to public hearing, correct?
At some point in time, yes.
Okay.
Then, no, sir. The ordinance, the resolution does allow the Planning Commission to make modifications as you deem appropriate and necessary. If, if so desired, we can add the word in there regarding the agent, that implies the subdivision agent or a site plan agent, which in both cases, myself, the county minister has delegated his authority to me. So our office, planning and zoning, is the coordinating agency for the technical review of, of plans. So if any other department asks to have a meeting, we will ensure that that happens. So we can add agent into that section.
Yeah, again, I, I don't, there's not necessarily a necessity to have to put it on a public hearing, I don't know what our public hearing schedule looks like, but it doesn't seem to be that there, these are fairly comp, this one is fairly complicated, so I can go either way, it just depends on what the rest of the fellow commissioners think is appropriate.
Anyone else have a opinion on this, when to send it? Mr. Bain?
I, I think that's a good suggestion, I definitely support that.
So moving forward with it?
Yes.
With that change?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to that effect, to put it to the first available public hearing?
And second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Commissioner Rappicella, and a second by Commissioner Bain. Mr. Rappicella, any comments?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bain, any others? Okay, so we can vote to send it to public hearing at the first available date? All right, motion passes 7-0. Okay. Community drain fields, if we're working backwards?
Yes, ma'am. So I think Mr. Bain pointed that there might have been a typo. I don't know if he wants to speak to it, or I can speak to it. It's on page two, section 22-118, 4C.
Yes, and in that section, specification of the design capacity says 150, and in parentheses, 150 gallons per day, in parentheses, GPD bedroom, and it should actually be per bedroom. So 150 gallons a day per bedroom is how to develop the design capacity. And I think Mr. Harvey had responded that that could be corrected.
Yes. Mr. Bain, did you see anything else that needed to be fixed?
Not in the community drain field.
So with that change, Madam Chairman, I would recommend that the proposed ordinance be sent to a public hearing at the first available date.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Commissioner Rappicella, a second by Commissioner McPherson. Mr. Rappicella?
Nothing further, ma'am.
McPherson?
Nothing further.
Okay, anybody else, any comments? Okay, so we can vote on that item, to send to public hearing as well. All right, motion passes 7-0. All right, moving on to clusters.
On the clusters, so I have a question to ask of our Planning Director. Were there any actions or portions of the referral that the board sent our way where we can't make any changes and we essentially just need to take an up or down vote?
Mr. Rappicella, Madam Chairman, the referral from the Board of Supervisors allows the Planning Commission to make changes to the text of the comp plan amendment, as well as the zoning ordinance amendment. However, the Planning Commission is not at liberty to make changes to the map that would be in the comp plan, because that map is the same map that was adopted by the ord, by the board by ordinance.
How about the table of uses and standards? Can that be changed, or is that as presented?
My recollection is that the referring resolution allows you to make changes to the text of the document, so that would be text.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is the, the only item that was referred to us that can't be changed is the, the map?
Yes.
So we're, we're stuck with the map three, to make sure I'm clear, we're not, they were, they were presented with three, they narrowed it down, and that's what we, we got an up or down map three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're adopting it to our comprehensive plan, correct?
Yes, our comprehensive... Yes, our comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance will be in harmony.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairman, seeing that we can't make any changes anyhow on that specific piece, I would recommend that we put that specific portion of the referral or action item to a public hearing at the nearest possible date.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Appicella to send that to public hearing since we can't make any changes to the closest possible date. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so a second by Mr. English. Mr. Appicella, any further comments?
No, ma'am.
Mr. English?
No.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, for the information for the commission, there will have to be some text to the comprehensive plan to accompany the map to explain what that is and how it fits into the comp plan.
Right, but we would take care of that at the appropriate time, after, or as part of.
As part of this public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. McPherson, go ahead.
I do have a question, too. The option-three map is an up or down vote. We are allowed to change the text. However, the text might depend on option-three, so shouldn't we talk about the text first before we up or down the map? I think that there's other discussions going on. We wouldn't want to upper, we wouldn't want to approve or disapprove option-three before we've gone over the text, I don't think.
Mr. Appicella?
Yeah, again, we can't make a change to the map. The map is going to be what the map is. That's what the board referred to as, I think, the language in the referral specifically said, or as I recall in watching the hearing, that we could not make any changes to the map. So that piece, yes, the text could change, but the map won't change. So I don't see any harm in moving forward with the map and then further amending the comp plan as necessary to address the textual change requirements.
My comment is not that we can change the map, but once we have approved or disapproved it, then we are locked in. I think that we should discuss the text first or an approval at the same time.
Yeah, I think we're locked into the map no matter what. So it's sort of, we could talk about the map when we talk about the text, but it doesn't change, it won't change the map.
And so, in regards to the text, Mr. Appicella, are you wanting to move forward that at a slower pace because we can make edits to it?
Yes.
And, and so, I'm just saying this so everybody's on the same page here. And so you want to move forward the map first and then the text so we are able to make changes and make sure that all the language marries up to the map?
Right.
Okay. And, Mr. Wazniewski, are there any issues in separating the two?
Madam Chairman, there are no legal issues with separating the two, but when you create multiple public hearings, it might create some confusion for the public, potentially it could. That's something for your consideration.
Okay, all right. Mr. McPherson, do you have any more comments on it?
No, I've made my comments, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I do.
Mr. Randall?
I guess that would be my, I understand what we're trying to do and get everything out of the way that we potentially can get out of the way as soon as possible. I understand that. I'm concerned, again, what, as was mentioned, that there may be some confusion and we may be duplicating effort if we have two public hearings regarding the cluster, whether it's the map or the text. I'm not sure the basic understanding will be that rather than doing them all together, we can say, "Public hearing on everything, understand the maps aren't going to go anywhere, but we're going to move the map and the text together, and we're going to present them together, they're going to be shown together, we're going to talk about them together." I just don't know if we gain much by separating them out, although I do recognize that trying to get this done and get everything out of the way, out of the way as soon as possible.
So when this goes back to the board, since the board's already approved the map, when they actually take up this item, they won't be taking a look at the map, right? They've already, they've already approved the map. There's no further action from them on the map.
But they send it to us for up or down vote.
Standpoint, that's correct.
And, and in my six years on this planning commission, it's not the first time that we've bifurcated the map and text associated with the map. Is that correct? We have done that before?
I'm sure we have.
So again, it just seems to me that, I understand, we've done it before, the map can't be changed. It's, for lack of a better term, it's a done deal. I don't see what the harm is, is just moving forward with it, since it's, in any event going to happen, regardless of what we, what we do further on, so.
It's my understanding it's not a done deal, it's an up or down vote? Do we have?
Do we have to have a public hearing then if it's something that can't be changed? It's already been approved, adopted by ordinance. Is there a public hearing requirement for that?
There's a public hearing requirement that puts us.
For the text.
Gives us the responsibility to make changes to the comp plan, including maps, so we're kind of following the action already taken by the board on the map piece. I understand that it's not the normal process, but, you know, we still have an administrative responsibility to approve the map.
Does that answer your question, Mr. McPherson?
So we do have to approve the map?
We have to take, we have to take action on the map.
Into the comp plan?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's an important caveat, because it's not like if we vote down the map, it kills the cluster ordinance. It's just into the comp plan, to bring it into compliance with the current ordinance. Mr. Harvey, really quickly remind me, what are the time limits on the map from the board and the text? Are they the same time limits?
Yes, ma'am. The time limit is, the commission has to vote on the comp plan amendment as well as the zoning ordinance amendment by May 31st.
Okay, so let's play this out. So let's say we vote to move forward with the map, when would the, when would that public hearing be?
That public hearing would be your second meeting in April.
Okay, and let's say that we decided to make changes to the map that would give us just, or not in the map. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know that. Make changes to the text, to the text amendment, not the map, to the text. That would have to be done by the end of May, so it would just give, it's a month difference, basically.
It could be. Depends on when the commission wants to move forward with a public hearing, because you could finalize the text at your next planning commission meeting or the second meeting in April and still have either your first or second public hearing in May for the hearing and decision.
And so if, let me just play devil's advocate. If we move forward with the text to public hearing tonight, and Dan says, "Well, there's something in there that, you know, we probably should have changed," then we would have to advertise for another public hearing, correct?
Madam Chairman, it really depends on the change, how substantive it is, and what we advertised.
Okay.
So it depends on the change.
I would definitely say that we're not ready to make any, or take any action on the text. And we should talk about the process, no matter what we do, on the map piece, because we don't have a lot of time to deal with it, so.
Okay. Well, hopefully that gives everybody a better idea of the timing, and I agree, I don't think we're ready to take any action on the text currently. So, does anybody want to, so we already had a motion, I think, back, let me think back twenty minutes ago, so we had a motion, and it was, motion was to send the map to the first available public hearing, and it was a second by Mr. English. So are there any alternative motions? Okay, yes, Mr. Harvey?
Madam Chairman, just to clarify, when we hold a hearing on the map, I believe that we would also need to include the text in the provision on attachment five, page three of seven. It talks about cluster subdivision areas, which describes the map, how the map was derived. So I think that part would also need to be in the comp plan text.
I amend my motion with that in mind.
Okay. All right. All right. So, any further discussion? Okay, so let's move forward with the vote.
What are we voting on?
Don't make me say it again. To send.
The map and the language associated with the map.
Yes, the map and the language.
To the first available public hearing.
With the map, to the first available. Not all the text amendment, just anything that the map require, the text required of the map, or however you would say that.
No.
Okay, we good? Any more discussion? All right, okay, so we're ready to vote. Okay, so the motion passes to five, five to zero, to send the map to the first available.
Five to two.
I'm sorry, five to two. I just eliminated two people. It's past my bedtime. Five to two. All right. So now, do we want to talk about the text?
I, I think there's a lot there. I wonder if it's, and it, you know, it has to be done quickly. I wonder if it's worth setting up a quick subcommittee to kind of delve into it and maybe come to the commission with a, with a recommendation?
I would agree.
Okay. I can see the staff is very excited about a subcommittee. But I actually do agree with the fact of creating a small subcommittee, just to have one meeting to discuss the text. Even if it's just a two-member subcommittee, I don't think it needs to be massively large to work with council to make sure that we've got good language going into the next meeting, because this does need to be done very, very quickly. Does anybody want to volunteer? Otherwise, I can appoint some folks. I know that Mr. Randall would like to be on the subcommittee, because we've already discussed that potential.
I also would volunteer.
Mr. McPherson? Okay, so we have Mr. Randall and Mr. McPherson. Anybody else want to volunteer? We're just going to cap it at two. Mr. Appicella?
You're up for, Mr. Bain, if you can do it.
Okay, you want three? You want four? You want to get, you want to just?
I don't think, I think that would be too many. So three, I think, would be appropriate, and I think some fresh perspectives would be good, so.
Okay. You guys better bring something good. Yeah, and it's due by Saturday.
It's midnight.
Okay, so then, I guess we're going to appoint a subcommittee, just for the viewers watching, so they understand what just took place. And the subcommittee is going to work to have language to the commission by the next meeting, which is April 11th. And so the members of the subcommittee are going to be Mr. McPherson, Mr. Bain, and Mr. Randall. So, there we go, all the newbies. Okay, so moving on, we're done with that, thank goodness. County attorney's report.
Madam Chairman, I have no report.
Okay. Committee reports. Sign ordinance committee is pretty much no longer in existence, so can we take that off of the agenda moving forward?
You're the chair.
Yeah, I know I asked that last time, and it's still on there, so can we just take that one off? Landstate landscaping subcommittee?
Yes, ma'am. We met this evening, and we have come up with a final draft, and it should be, we're going to present that the 25th of April. It'll be presented to the commission, and then we'll go for mayor.
Okay, thank you. Parking and drive aisles, that would be me and Mr. McPherson, and I know we had, oh, we have these lovely print-offs, and Ms. Hornung has been chomping at the bit to come talk to us all evening about parking and drive aisles. So there's two little handouts for everyone. Ms. Hornung?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, excuse me. What I, just a little background update. When we met at your last meeting, I, you got a copy of the ordinance to repeal the parking, loading, and then a new ordinance that showed all the B1, B2 uses included, because the way the parking regulations are currently, the commercial uses, commercial retail uses are listed as low, medium, and high intensity. So the committee, the subcommittee asks that the B1 and B2 uses be included. And so you have two handouts. The one handout, which is on the non-eight-and-a-half-by-fourteen, it highlights in yellow, those are the B1, B2 uses that were included in the new parking standards. And then there were some questions and recommendations of some inconsistencies, and those were fixed for square foot land area where it should be recorded versus GFA. So some of those information was corrected. Also, I noticed that under data and computer services, per was missing, which actually is in red. So it'd be one-point-five per number of employees on maximum shift. Now, the rest of the ordinance, everything in yellow is a B1 or B2 use that was not originally included. And then the, it was gray in the original, but the way it got copied, it looks like a gray, blue-gray color. On the other items, those were the designations that were changed from the existing. And if you would like me to let you know exactly what the existing number is versus the proposed, I can do that, because I have that in my list.
So I, this seems to be a breakout of various localities and how they compare to Stafford, is that correct?
Right, I didn't get, I was going to get to that as well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I can talk about that now if you like.
No, because I have one specifically I want to mention, which is the same one I mentioned last time.
He also is chomping at the bit.
Well, let me ask you this. Would you like me to go through item by item in the proposed parking regulations for those items that have changed from the existing regulation?
I would like to talk about the one heartburn.
Yeah, I think we've done this so many times. I think we all should have seen this by now, so, go ahead.
So what I see here is that for comparable localities, they don't break out townhomes from apartments. Is that correct?
Correct. What happens is, townhomes are, in Stafford County, looked at in a similar fashion as single-family dwellings, because they're on individual lots. Multifamily is the structure, whether it's an apartment, condo, or townhouse, but the land is not subdivided. And those are the developments that you'll typically see with a parking lot in the middle, where everybody can park, and then a number of parking spaces at the front of those structures, similar to an apartment complex or a condo. Because I believe in Woodstream, there is a section where the buildings look like townhouses, but they're actually on one piece of land. They didn't subdivide the land, so that would be looked at as a multifamily use when we were looking at parking. Now, on the townhomes, because Stafford designates them differently, the townhomes are looked at as a single-family dwelling lot. They're a lot, and it's just the building is a townhouse versus a single-family house, but it's still a separate lot. So you'll have a road going through that development, and parking might be at the end of one of the roads, as seen in Rapahannock Landing. You have the roads going through, they are townhouse structures, they're individual lots, but at the end of the road, there might be a few parking spaces.
I got you. In my view, townhomes are not apartments, and they're not single-family detached, and the difference being, a townhome between a, between a townhome and a single-family detached is a single-family detached is probably going to have a garage and a driveway where you can park a car.
And we are seeing some townhomes, now, single-family attached is similar to the townhomes, but the townhomes, we do see some of them have garages, like in Emery Mill.
Some of them do, but a lot of them don't. So I'm still, having been an HOA president, having seen numerous parking issues, I strongly believe that reducing the number from two-point-two units to two is not going to be sufficient, because in a townhome, you're likely going to have at least two drivers taking up two spaces. And so we've accommodated zero spaces in a townhome development for guests. So, you know, you've got a row of five or six townhomes, you've got ten or twelve spaces, where's the visitor going to park if they're only held to the same number of parking spaces as drivers they have in that residential unit? That's my concern, and I've seen a number of townhome developments, including the one that I lived in and helped oversee, battles for limited guest parking. And here, there's no guest parking. So I just think that, I think that something got lost in translation between multifamily, maybe the comment about multifamily, and how it related to maybe apartments versus townhomes, and how that's wrapped into our multifamily construct in Stafford. So I really think we shouldn't make that change from two-point-two to two-point-zero for townhomes. I think that would create numerous problems in townhome developments. So I would recommend that we not, not make that change.
Ms. Hornung, can you remind me, if a townhome builds a garage, do the garage, like, let's say it builds a two-car garage or even a one-car garage, do those spaces count to the county as parking spaces?
I believe they do. I don't know how many, maybe one.
They do not count towards parking.
Not the garage.
You still have to provide parking spaces on your driveway and/or, in the case of townhomes, an accessory park, auxiliary parking area.
The other thing I would offer on townhomes, kind of like with our e-commerce discussion and how parking is limited and why we didn't necessarily want to have customers visiting townhomes, is because in most cases, the resident doesn't own that space. It's owned by the association. The association manages those parking spaces and either allocates them generally to anyone who, it's a free-for-all, or assigns specific spaces. Again, that creates a, a huge problem where people are trying to find spaces to park. So, even with a garage, I can tell you, in a, I've, my townhome had a garage, what do you do with that? You probably put most of your stuff, it becomes extra storage, especially in a townhome where you don't have a lot of extra space to, to put stuff. I, I just think we're creating a huge problem for the county if we reduce the number of parking spaces in the townhome development.
Are there, Mr. Randall?
Madam Chair, to that point, was there a thought, is the expectation then that when they allocate, that they'll only allocate one per townhome and the rest of them will be visitor spots? Or was there an expectation through the committee that there would be no visitor spots in, in a new development?
So when we looked at it, we looked at the difference from the other localities and that it was like 1.6 versus our 2.2. And the fact that we don't allow garage spaces, so I think we were just maybe over-assuming that townhomes would build garages, people would actually, they'd build a two-car garage and at least park one of their cars, so if we could have alleviated at least the 0.2 space, then they'd have two spaces, so, you know, that would be a good amount. But I guess it's not necessarily encouraging garages to be built, so I think, you know, my, my thoughts after hearing Mr. Appicella's comments would either be, you know, if there is a two-car garage built, then, you know, it could, then they could have the two spaces. But if it's, if it's a one-car garage or no garage at all, then 2.2 per unit. But I don't even know if we can do that, so that would just be my-
You mean separate, you mean separate amount like that?
Yeah, separate it, say if you're building a two-car garage, you can do two outdoor spaces.
Right, there's surely a large difference between Emery Mill building the townhomes with garages-
Yeah.
-and the townhomes on High Point that were built a number of years ago-
Yeah, that had no garage.
-that have no garages and, again, having been over there numerous times, there is no place to park. Visitor parking is very limited and if you go to 2.0, then the requirement, there won't be any visitor parking-
Yeah.
-allowed. And so, otherwise, you know, they'll only say, okay, these three will only have one spot, these three will have two, and those types of things. So I, I think there is some validity to, to leaving that at a 2.2, unless of course we can separate them out.
Can we, can we add in, can we differentiate between townhomes with one or two garages and not? Is there any reason we couldn't do that?
Mr. McPherson, we, we could make the differentiation. The one thing we'd have to say is if there's any units that have garages, they'd all have to have garages to meet that requirement.
Yeah. It does get cumbersome, I agree. Or we just leave it at 2.2 and just leave-
I, I think 2.2 is the bare, the 0.2 is the bare minimum.
It should be three.
I, I don't disagree, but I'm just saying, going down to nothing is just going to create huge problems.
And, Madam Chairman, as you recall, this charge to develop this revised ordinance requirement came from Board of Supervisors Community Economic Development Committee. They felt that there was some concern in the community that maybe some of our uses were overparked. However, this recommendation is the planning commission's recommendation, and I'll go back to the board, and if the board sees fit, we'll hold a public hearing on it. So it's, it's at the planning commission's discretion and pleasure as to what you want to have in the proposed amendment.
So we can, just hold on one second, so we can actually change it to anything we want right here, and we're just recommending to the board, hey, we did this research, this is what we think should be the parking standards, and then they will vote whether or not they, they want us to hold a public hearing to even move further with the project, or just leave it alone as it stands.
Correct.
So that way, everybody understands, because I know some people are, are newer than, when we started this, it feels like almost a year ago. And so then, when we send it to public hearing, that's when the numbers have to be firm, we can't make those changes. So if, if we want to change anything, now's the time.
Can-
Yes.
Can I make a motion?
Mr. English, well, yeah, I, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, can I?
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah.
Huh? Huh?
I'd make a recommendation, we may get 2.5 for the townhouses.
Well, I don't-
Can we do that?
I don't know if we need a motion, I think we can just make the change.
I, I would definitely support 2.5, based on, based on my experience, absolutely.
I've lived in a townhouse before and I know exactly what you're saying.
I've towed out them and I know exactly what to say.
Yeah. So, yeah, we don't, I don't think we, Mr. Wizniewski, we don't need a motion to do that change, right?
Well, you need something, Madam Chairman, to, to, to agree on to vote two, so it should be clarified.
Okay. All right, so there's his motion, who seconded?
I did.
All right, Mr. Boswell. All right, any comments?
No ma'am, 2.5 please.
All right, does anybody else have any comments? All right, so go ahead and vote to raise it to 2.5.
And, excuse me, that is for townhomes only, correct?
Townhomes only.
Because multifamily is-
2.5 townhouses.
-is agreeable to the commission, 2.2?
Yeah, multi, that's okay with me.
No, 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 I'm not.
Okay. Go ahead and vote.
This, this is the cul, culmination of what the committee worked on since last June, when, prior to that, the board had sent, the, sent it down for the planning commission to work on the parking loading requirements. So whatever you want to put in here, now's the time to adjust any of those numbers by agreeing an agreement from the committee, so that staff can put them together and then you can see them and then you can forward them onto the board, and then the board will decide for, back to you for a public hearing, or they'll make changes or whatever they decide to do, then it'll come back to you and that's when the public hearing process will begin.
Yep. Okay, so we're ready to vote.
I'm sorry, are we just voting on the townhouse?
That's correct, we're only-
We can vote on others as well.
We can. So now that we understand the process of how this is going to go, so we're voting right now on increasing the townho, homes from two to two and a half.
To 2.5.
Yeah, 2.5. All right, you can have it, two Tahos and a Mini Cooper. All right. All right, so that motion passes unanimously. Are there any other items that we would like to address?
And I never really explained, the chart that you received, the highlighted chart, that's the chart the committee worked on when staff compared Stafford, Henrico, Spotsylvania, and Prince William with all the uses. So some of them don't have anything in there, because they might have been in general, or we, Stafford County might have had it in general what the parking requirement was. And the highlighted items were requested of, from the committee to see what items were more than 10% different than, than Stafford County. So that's the, that kind of explains the chart that you received, was the working chart. Yes, sir?
I have a, a question about the plant and tree nursery slash greenhouse. There'd been a typographical error previously that I pointed out and that, that has been corrected, but the response mentioned that greenhouses would be treated differently, and I'm wondering, should we specify in there that greenhouses are based on square footage of the greenhouse and not on overall land area?
I just want to know how blue houses are-
Well, you know, any color house.
We could, and I'll verify that with the zoning administrator to make sure if we need to say, plant tree nursery, or, or for land area, and then the greenhouse would be for GFA.
Right.
Because I know there's some state regulations that apply to agricultural uses and how we're looking at things if they can submit, if they're supposed to submit plans of development.
Okay.
And some of those have changed recently, and I'm not up to speed on those specifics.
All right.
But we will get that corrected, it'll say either land area slash, or we'll just divide it out. We'll have a line item for plant and tree nursery and then we'll put underneath and/or greenhouse and have that designated as well.
All right, thank you. Madam Chairman?
Mr. Appicella?
No, go ahead.
So, I, I brought this point up at the last meeting, looking at the background section in the report, the last couple of sentences, I'm just going to read it out. And the zoning ordinance definition of a street creates some problems for commercial developments, this, the definition of a street is an accessway that serves three or more properties, imposing street construction standards within a commercial development may be costly and overly burdensome. That's the words that were in the background section, and I'm not saying I agree or disagree with that point, it's just still not clear to me if and how that was addressed.
I don't believe it was specifically addressed, I know that information came from previous staff reports that were as a result of the process design committee and then the board staff report.
I recall in the committee meetings, there was discussion about that, but that, my recollection was, the end result was to leave it as it is.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to be sure somehow, some way it was discussed.
I guess, I'm okay with this, so I would probably like to make a motion when we move forward with this document that you gave us as far as parking with the changes that we asked for the townhouses. So I'm making that a motion.
All right, that's a motion, do we have a second so we can discuss?
I second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. English, a second by Mr. Randall. Any further comments, Mr. English?
No, I think we've done the, we added what we wanted to the townhouses, I think everything else looks fair.
Mr. Randall?
No, other than just to identify this as table 7.1, correct?
Madam Chair, the point of discussion?
Yes, yeah, Mr. McPherson?
During our last meeting, there was a comment that due to Stafford's location, I, I believe in the Chesapeake area development, I, I forget what exactly called, we need to incorporate maximum numbers of parking for some, for some items, has that been taken care of?
Mr. McPherson, no, we have not addressed that. I was reporting at the last planning commission meeting that we had had our, we were in the process of having an audit from the Chesapeake Bay staff of Department of Environmental Quality, and that was one of the recommendations that it would likely make, we've not received that recommendation yet from them. So that may be something we need to address in the future. We'd probably have to do some additional research to see how other jurisdictions have set maximums and how, how, how that was structured.
Okay, so it seems to me that we can, you know, please correct me if I'm wrong in your opinion, we can vote tonight on the minimums, the maximums can be added at a later time, they don't have to be incorporated into this vote, this evening?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Sure. Any other comments from the commission? Okay. All right, so a motion by Mr. English to accept this and send this to the board, second by Mr. Randall. We can take a vote. Oh, there we go. Okay, motion passes 7-0. Okay, we're finally done with parking, and drive aisle subcommittee, please take that off the agenda.
Good job, Angie.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Hornung, we didn't recognize you, but you were fantastic in, in helping us get to such a great endpoint.
It was a joint effort of many people, planning commission-
Thank you so much.
-because we had three members of the planning commission-
Yes, we did.
-two existing and one former, so there were a lot of people involved in getting all this information.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, A1 uses subcommittee, do you have an update? That's right, you defred it.
I do, no, our next meeting tentatively scheduled for April the 10th at 6:30.
Okay, so we're reconvening.
Is that good for you, Stephen?
What day is it?
It's a Tuesday.
Is the board not meeting that day?
No.
No, we have our meeting the next night, the 11th.
Is that okay? All right.
At 6:30, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cemetery ordinance subcommittee, staff is still working on the report, we're hoping to have that at one of the, either the first or the second April meeting, to move forward with that. Chairman's report, I have no report at this time, other business, just of note, TRC in the Acquahia District and in the Garrisonville District, and we do actually have some minutes to approve tonight for February 28th, 2018. And before we do that, I just want to make a note that the December and the January meetings were outsourced, right, to, to, oh, this one was outsourced, so the other one Stacy is working on, and that's why it's taking so long, because those meetings were extremely long, and she's been working really hard. December was a long meeting, so she's been working really hard to try to get those to us.
Would you like to outsource them all?
To Mr. Boswell.
Put it in the budget, Jeff.
Madam Chairman, I have some minor changes.
Okay, to April, or to February 28th meeting minutes?
Yes.
All right.
On page 40, line 1939, where it says probably would, please add the word not, I'm very sure I said would not have that big of an impact.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Which one?
On the next page, line 1963, I think there should be a dollar sign there, $525,000. On page 65, line 3154, about the middle of the line, as one speaker ER. And on line 3158, a little bit past midway, so for those reasons, add an S. That's it, Madam Chairman.
Okay. So, we've got those changes on page 40, 41, 65, and 65. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes and accept the minutes.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. English, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Appicella, any discussion?
Nope.
All right, so let's take a vote. All right, motion passes 7-0, meeting adjourned.